Good evening, everybody. Just give us a second, we'll wait for our attendee room to fill up. Okay, so we're at forty-two right now. And it looks like we're leveling off at forty-two, forty-three. Okay, so let's come to order. And if could join me. Where's my Safari? And a salute to the flag. Everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
Of America.
Justice for all. Thank you, everybody. And can we have a sunshine announcement, please?
Hey, and then, good evening, today is Tuesday, November twentieth, I mean twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting for the scheduled start date, start time at five thirty PM. In an effort to adhere to social distancing protocols and best practices imposed by city and state authorities, the City of Jersey City canceled all public meetings until further notice. As a result, this planning board meeting is being held virtually as a video conference that is open to the public. In accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with City Clerk on November twentieth. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
Thank you. All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Vice Chairman Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Here.
Commissioner Horton.
Here.
And Vice Chairman Gonzalez, I mean, I'm sorry, Chairman Langston.
Here.
Okay, five present.
Thank you. Mike, can you swear in the staff, please?
I see Erica, Cameron, Matt, Mallory. That's good enough. You guys want any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any correspondence? I know we have a number of meeting or items carried.
Correct. So item number eight, case number P two zero dash zero seven zero for six two six Newark Avenue is carried to the December eighth meeting with preservation of notice. Item ten, case number P two zero dash zero eight six for thirty dash thirty-two Jones Street has been carried to December eighth. Item eleven for P two zero dash zero nine six for seventeen dash two three, twenty-three Perrine Avenue has been carried to December eighth, the preservation of notice. Item twelve for the review and discussion of amendments to the Siff Avenue Gateway Redevelopment Plan has been carried to a date uncertain. Item twenty-four for case P two zero dash zero nine eight for four fifteen dash four thirty-five Summit Avenue has been carried to December eighth with preservation of notice. I, item twenty-five, case number P two zero dash zero nine four for six fifty Grove Street has also been carried to December eighth with preservation of notice.
Okay, thank you. Could we bring Gerard up real quick? I think I owe Gerard an explanation on why we're carrying Perrine.
Promoted him.
Okay, Gerard, just yell when you're, you're alive.
I'm alive. How, how are you, Chairman?
How are you? I apologize. I, I know you noticed for tonight, we just found out this was on about, at about four forty-five. Yeah, I know it was resun, you know, the agenda was resunshined on Friday. But, you know, we have a couple commissioners that, that didn't really review it. We didn't know it was on tonight. So we're gonna have to carry you. I apologize.
Okay, I, I understand it's unfortunate, but I completely respect your decision. And we'll be on for the eighth, obviously, preservation of notice.
Santo, do you wanna, did we preserve notice already, I'm assuming?
Well, I believe, I believe counsel renoticed for tonight's hearing.
Okay, do we wanna check the notice and preserve it, or do we just wanna tackle that on the eighth?
So I've already looked at the notice. I know that he renoticed for tonight. So counsel, I have no problem with the notice. The notice will be accepted and carried forward for the December eighth hearing to anybody that's out there in, in the world wide web, there'll be no further notice of this application. This is case P twenty dash zero nine six seventeen dash twenty-three Perrine Avenue. It will be heard at the December eighth meeting, and there'll be no further notice. So again, December eighth, that case will be heard in council. Just for purposes of the record, we will preserve the notice, but we have your consent to extend time within which act.
Yes, counsel, you do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, counsel. Enjoy your weekend.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Have a nice holiday, everyone.
You too.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, so let's move on to new business. We're gonna call item nine is case P two zero dash one two zero, the address being twenty-four to thirty-two Van Ripen Avenue.
Evening. If you could promote Paul Freitas as well. Looks very relaxed in his Hawaiian shirt.
Oh, no, I didn't see.
He's still photographed. So, okay, for the record, Charles Harrington of Conne Foley, on behalf of the applicant, this, this should be quick. It's the proposal tonight, or amendments to this previously approved project, which is also part of that Homestead Place Extension. So it was, it was approved already by the board. What we're proposing tonight is similar to what was before the board two weeks ago for twenty-six Cottage to provide EFS material on the facades and then provide for work with the Jersey City mural program to provide a mural on, on those facades. There's a, the only difference here is that we are also asking for a few additional changes to the building where we're going to remove the pool, we're moving the entrance to the residential, and I think there might be one other removal of a building marquee, which Mr. Freitas can briefly take you through. And then I do have Mr. Colling here. If the board wants to hear from him, I also submitted a principal point statement that sets forth our reasoning consistent with, you know, prior applications before this board and twenty-six Cottage. With that said, I, I'll move on to Mr. Freitas.
Let's qualify your notice first.
Oh, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did receive notice of this application. The notice that I have was for the October meeting, when it was originally heard and has been subsequently carried. We've had the opportunity to review it. All does appear to be in order, so we can mark that as a one for the record.
Thank you.
Hi, Paul, you see me?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
I just wanna swear you in, okay? Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Paul Freitas, P A U L F R E I T as in Thomas, A S.
Thank you.
Mr. Freitas, good evening. We've qualified you in the past. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're qualified. Thank you.
Okay, Paul, could you take the board through the proposed changes?
Yeah, I'm gonna share my screen. Just please let me know if you guys can see it. Can you see the footprint of the building right now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so originally, I don't know if you can see my cursor down here in the corner. Originally, the entrance to the, the residential entrance to the building was on Van Ripen. At this location, due to some mechanical constraints, where we had to include a gas meter off the road, roadway, we've changed the location of the entrance, the residential entrance onto the Homestead Plan Extension, and that's basically highlighted by this red bubble here with the double doors. Above it is a, a marquee similar to what was originally proposed. The only difference being is the original marquee spanned the entire length of Homestead Place and turned the corner and wrapped around Van Ripen. So part of this change is to reduce, change the entrance, residential entrance to Homestead and to reduce the size of the marquee that was originally planned at this location. The second main component to the changes were originally on this rooftop, there was a, a large swing pool in this location. Due to budget constraints, the, the pool has been removed from the plan, and it's just substituted with pavers in Lincoln Kind to the rest of the recreational rooftop area. And then finally, on the north elevation, as Mr. Harrington had mentioned, we're proposing the removal of the metal panels with a EFS product. It's a stucco, plaster stucco based product, which in turn is, is, is good for painting murals on. I have a, I can, it basically looks like this. You'll notice here also, this is the changes to the elevation, which basically show the removal of the canopy along the Van Ripen and Homestead elevation with a with the canopy still remaining directly over the residential entrance. I think that's all I've got, unless you have any other questions. Under here, here is the second floor plan showing the canopy, the marquee, excuse me.
Okay. All right, anybody have any questions for Mr. Freitas? And who's this? This is Erica's. Erica, we've, we've done EFS a few times here now. What are the, I, I know we generally ask for certain criteria to, to have the EFS, you know, cut inside rather than outside. Can you go over, you know, the standards that we require?
Um, I do recall, yes, that was one of the conditions. And I think for a lot of the, the proposals where we haven't allowed it to, sorry, to extend the entire facade, just wherever the mural is. I'm trying to recharge, if there is anything else. I think, yeah, just trying to control the potential dust.
Erica, finally. Another, another condition that the board considered recently was to net the area so that during installation, even if they're cutting indoors during the installation, there's an extra security of them netting the area during installation so that it taps any sort of, be, from leaving the site as well.
And, and those would be acceptable conditions, because we're fully aware of, of the, you know, the effects if you're not doing this correctly to the community.
Yeah.
And I, I might add also that this is all, most of this is a trowel on product. So it gets troweled onto, you know, some lath. So it's really the, the amount of cutting that's happening here is, is really only based on the insulation that gets applied. And the bulk of that is actually large, large panels that get applied to the facade. So in the grand scheme of things, the cutting and the, and the kind of stuff that might fly off is very limited.
Okay, yeah, we just wanna make extra certain that it's, you know.
Couldn't agree with you more.
Careful. Is there a certification for EFS? I, I don't know what to call them, EFS installers?
Absolutely. Every, every installer has to be approved by the manufacturer that provides the warranty on the product. So it's a very strict method of operation and installation that has to be followed in order to maintain that warranty. So they're all qualified to do, you know, the work that that's gonna be done here.
And I believe most, if not all lenders, require that as well when you use this product.
Okay, um, so counsel, can we put that in your, in your list as well?
Sure.
And what is that for? Under carpentry, or is that a masonry?
It's a masonry product. The EFS of, of yesteryear was a real terrible product, which was sprayed on, and it was like styrofoam. That's no longer what's being used, and that, and that's why EFS has got a bad name, because that, that original product was, it had a number of issues with respect to keeping the weather out and degrading over time. This product is, is a plaster based product that actually is more of a masonry based product that's, you know, dries up and it makes a pretty hard shell.
Yeah, I've seen the, you know, the newer, I've seen the older ones and the newer installs of it, and it is a a much better product than it used to be. You know, I think it's something that we should be looking at as, as a better insulator than other products that are out there now. So, I don't know, time will tell. Okay, anybody else, any questions? Okay, counsel, um, the only variance is the EFS, correct?
I'm sorry?
The only variance is the EFS?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, I, as much as I love to hear Mr. Colling, I don't know if we need him tonight.
Yes, then we'll, we'll just submit on, you know, our past representations and the principal point statement that I submitted to with the application.
Okay, thank you. All right, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's out there that wants to comment, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, I don't think I see any call-ins, but if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public wanna comment?
Mr. Chair, seeing no public, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Erica, do you wanna wrap us up, please?
Sure, yes. So I submitted a staff report dated October.
We actually do have a.
Oh, a hand raise?
Yeah.
Are we gonna open the public back up?
Should, we should.
I'd like to make a motion to open public once again.
Back in.
All right, thank you, guys. Public is open again. We have Mr. Gadsden with his hand raised.
I just promoted Gadsden.
I'm sorry, I just had just a quick question.
Just real quick, before, before you get going. Well, are you just asking a procedural question right now?
Procedural question. Was the public speaking open just for that particular issue, or you gonna open up public speaking on each various item that you present tonight?
Each and every item we, we open public up for, Chris.
Okay, I'm sorry for interruption. Sorry.
No problem. And that's a great picture on your, on your screen there.
Thank you. You have something to do with it.
Like to make a motion to close public portion?
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded again. Public is closed. Okay, Erica, wrap us up.
So I provided a staff report dated October twenty-seventh to the, to Chuck Harrington, and I just wanted to see those conditions are fine.
They are, yes.
So, yeah, I don't have any further comments.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero dash one two zero as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded for approval.
With the conditions for the.
Yes, conditions.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Horton.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Hi.
Vice Chairman Gonzalez.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi.
The motion carries. All in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, counsel. All right, let's move to item number thirteen as case P two zero dash zero seven four is a preliminary and final major site plan for seven fifty-six Communipaw Avenue. Stephen Joseph out there?
Yes, I promoted him.
All right. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful.
All right, actually, you're a little muffled.
Am I? I'm using a new, a new webcam.
Oh, boy.
We can't hear anything.
Is that better?
No.
I think Mr. Lewis might need to mute as well, too.
Stephen, you may wanna toggle to your microphone. You can click in the top right, that little arrow up, and then maybe say, say "M" system. And that might pull from your laptop microphone.
Is that better?
No, that was about the same.
Okay, one more time, is that better?
That is beautiful.
Okay, I am so sorry.
No problem, no problem.
Okay. Stephen Joseph of the Toronto Law Firm for the applicant. This is seven fifty-six Communipaw Avenue. It's actually seven fifty-six to seven fifty-eight. It's, it's three lots on Communipaw Avenue. It's located mid-block between JFK and, and West Side in the Commercial Automotive District. The applicant is proposing to rehab and reuse an existing one-story car wash and create a laundromat on this site. The proposal includes onsite improvements, including thirteen parking spaces where twelve are required, several street trees filling in of a depressed curb. The use is permitted. We're requesting no variances this evening. This is just a, a major site plan application. So I have one witness for you this evening, Jeff Lewis. He's our licensed architect.
Okay, thank you.
And Chairman, this was a notice case. It was originally noticed for the November tenth meeting. It was carried to tonight with the preservation of notice. I have reviewed the notice. All does appear to be in order. So we can go ahead and mark that as a one for the record.
Thank you, counsel.
Hi, Jeff, I'll swear you in, all right? You swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? We lost your audio. I heard you before, but now I can't hear you anymore.
You're muted, Mr. Lewis.
There we go. It was there for a second, and now it's not. You did something, and we can hear you, but now, how about now? There we go. Yeah, let me just.
Okay, all right.
You swear any testimony you're gonna give tonight? It's the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And just for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Jeffrey Lewis, J E F F R E Y L E W I F.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and I guess for the record, my license is current and in good standing. And so with that, I'll just.
I was muted. I was asking you that question, but yeah, thank you. You're qualified.
You shouldn't need to ask at this point. Let me go right to my screen sharing here. Hold on, I'm losing my mind. Okay, here we go, everyone. So I'm showing you the title sheet of our project for seven hundred and fifty-six Communipaw Avenue, which, as was mentioned, is a new laundromat in the existing one-story brick building. And we're also having thirteen parking spaces, and we're in the C A zone. And we are not asking for any variances for this project. However, I do wanna make one correction on the table before I go, go ahead. And it's in, in a relation to lot coverage. What it says on the table is actually incorrect. We're actually decreasing the lot coverage on this site. So the existing lot coverage should read ninety-one point two percent, so over the allowed ninety percent. And then our proposed will be eighty-eight point nine percent, which is actually a little bit below. So we're increasing the lot coverage and bringing it a little bit below the required ninety percent lot coverage number. And just, I'll jump into this site, this site plan very briefly, very quickly to let you know what we're doing, how that happened. So.
And Mr. Lewis, one second.
Building has, yes, sir.
If, if we could, for the signature plans, can we have that updated?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't.
The, for the, for the, we'll, we'll make the correction along with the, the corrections that Jeff is gonna, now, for the engineering comments as well.
Now, are the, the corrections on the, the slide you're showing now?
No, these are not corrected.
Okay. Santo, do you want to? Obviously, you know, this isn't a new exhibit. Do we need to mark anything, being that there's a change?
We can. We're gonna have it updated for the signature plan. The change is reflected on this plan, Mr. Lewis?
No, sir.
The change is not reflected on the plan yet.
No, it is not.
All right, so then we don't need to mark this, but we do need to have that change made, obviously, on the signature plan.
Of course. And I should note that it doesn't create an existing variance. It actually takes an existing non-conformity and brings it into conformity with the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, so just, just for clarity, that there are in the calculation of the existing lot coverage of the property. That's, that's more, the existing condition is more than what's reflected on the plans, but the proposed condition is, is accurate and remains accurate.
Okay.
What is shown on the plan versus what is actually there?
Let me, let me, I'm gonna walk through the site plan right now, and what I'll show you is, I'll talk about what's actually existing now, and then what we're adding to reduce that number.
Okay.
Okay, that works.
Okay, great. Okay, so you can see on the left at these, in these photographs, there's a retaining wall in the back of our property. It actually comes along the side as well. On the plan itself, you can see it all the way along this side and all the way along the back. And that's about a five or six foot high retaining wall. And everything on top of that retaining wall, between that and the property line, is just planted in lawn area. And that's on the side and the back, and that's what's existing now as impervious coverage. And that's the only thing that's existing as impervious coverage. We're keeping that and adding these two planting areas in the, in the parking area. So that's what we're adding. That's what's bringing us down to below ninety percent. So I wanted to explain that first, and then secondly, I wanna explain what we're changing in regards to our engineering comment letter, because I know some of these questions are going to come up, so we might as well address them now. Engineering is asking us to provide a new curb for the entire site, new sidewalk for the entire site. And also in regards that we're going to eliminate both of the existing depressed curb cuts and present, present only one new curb cut, and that's the twelve-foot curb cut where it's shown right now. So that's twelve-foot curb cut that access to the driveway is shown properly. However, the long curb cut in front of our building will be removed. That's the second change that we're going to be making. So in regards then, that's from our engineering comments, which were dated eleven nine, just for the record. So new sidewalk, new curb, two new street trees. Then moving on to our property. Um, then moving on to our property, moving on to our property itself, we have an existing, uh, concrete paved area in front of the building, which we are going to keep. There's a Bilko door into a small basement. Uh, we're going to keep it, but we're going to eliminate and replace the Bilko door with a new Bilko door, which will be painted the same color as the building itself. Uh, we're adding a few benches to the area. We're removing an existing freestanding sign, which you can also see on the street view photo here. The freestanding sign for the old car wash, so we will be removing that. And then we'll be replacing what was, um, these two garage doors with a building entry with an automatic, uh, entrance and a second, uh, curtain wall, uh, window opening. Uh, go moving on to the driveway garage, uh, garage parking area itself. Uh, we are keeping the existing metal, uh, gate and fence that's around the front and the sides here. Uh, we will be painting that black. It doesn't need any repairs in pretty good shape. And then as far as the parking area itself, we are going to be repaving the entire area. As I mentioned, we're taking out these two small sections to add some planting and also add a street tree into the parking area, uh, which gives us thirteen parking spaces, including one handicap space. And then also two, uh, trash area with two dumpsters in the back. Uh, the handicap space in the back might seem a little strange, however, the last thing I want to mention on this plan is that there is a second what was, uh, garage door in the back here that we're keep we're proposing to use as a second entrance to the building. So people that are parking, including the handicap spot, will have a very close entrance to the building right here. Uh, and actually, there is one last thing I needed to mention, which is this area that is above that I mentioned in the very beginning. We will keep it planted and replant what what needs to be planted. And we will be doing a new, uh, six-foot board-on-board fence along both of these property lines, because there's no fence there now. Okay, with that, I'm gonna move on to our floor plans. And I'm gonna go right to the the proposed first floor plan. Right here, could've just summed up. Okay, so I want to start here at the front where our building entry, the main entry, you enter into this, uh, large open area, which is for, uh, seating. Following this down the left, you have, uh, the office with the door out to the outside and another, a little private bath attached to, uh, an attendant room. After that, uh, there is that second entry that I mentioned from the garage, I mean, from the parking area. And then another door, which is actually just serving as an emergency exit. And then at the very back of the building, we have two ADA bathrooms. Uh, through through the center of the building, these main two blocks are blocks of washing machines. Uh, this large open area is a folding area with, uh, tables in the middle. And then along the rear and the side of the building, where these are where the dryers are located with a walkway behind them, so that, uh, tenants can access, uh, them from the rear. Uh, and then this little front area, we have elevated, uh, elevated waiting area. You can see on the top left here, we have a photograph of that pit. It's about a five-foot-deep pit, and that's our basement. So we're gonna build this up a couple of feet so that we have a basement that has a seven-foot ceiling height, and that allows to put all our meters and utilities in the basement. And then this will be an elevated seating area for, you know, for people that are hanging out doing their laundry. Um, next, I want to briefly go to the roof plan, just to show you. Uh, this roof actually, as part of the, um, sale of the building, was replaced with a new EPDM roof, so there's a brand-new roof on the building. We're propose proposing three new rooftop HVAC units. Uh, and because we have a pretty large parquet in the front of the building, you won't be able to see these units, uh, from the street. And then the third thing that I wanted to note that we're making clear on this plan is that, uh, there's a line, uh, ten feet from the property line, and all of our dryer exhaust, all of our exhaust periods will be ten feet away from the property line. This is just noting that just to make sure it's, uh, it's clear. Okay, now looking at the elevation. Uh, this this top elevation is the side facing the parking garage. And the center elevation here is the front elevation. Um, both there's two signs, one on the side, one on the front, and we're showing, uh, a detail of a little block of each sign. They're both backlit and they're sized, uh, to meet the requirements of the Jersey City signage ordinance. Um, we are replacing one, two, three garage doors. Two of them are being replaced with, uh, entry, uh, automated entry doors. The third is just, uh, a storefront glass, uh, window. And then we are adding two new windows to the front of the building as well. Uh, as far as finishes, uh, it's a stucco finish for the building. Uh, and the color is going to be, uh, kind of a medium gray color, a little dark. Um, and then the trim itself is also going to be stucco for doors and windows, and that will be a light gray color. And, uh, lastly, all of our doors, all of our storefronts, and all of our new windows are anodized aluminum finish for the for the windows. And, uh, this is actually, that concludes my presentation of the architectural drawings, and I could answer questions if they have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Um, I have two questions for you. Uh, I did hear you mention it, but, um, you know, you have the the handicapped entrance along the side of the building toward the back. Uh, both entrances are ADA compatible?
Yes, they are.
Okay, and, um, uh, the signage, uh, you mentioned is backlit. And actually, counsel, this is more for you. Um, could we have a condition that that signage is only lit during operating hours?
Abs- absolutely. Um, I I I can confirm with my client what the operating hours are. This is a laundromat. Um, I know many laundromats are, you know, twenty-four hours, large parts of the day. Um, I I can certainly get confirmation from my client by the time you're done asking questions, um, to Jeff.
Well, that was my last question, so I hope the board had more questions, but, uh, okay, anybody else, any questions?
Yes, I just have one question, simple question.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Sure.
Uh, the vent dry is, oh, goo- goo- good evening, by the way, the vent, the vent, the dry event, excuse me, although they're on a roof, correct?
They vent to the roof. That is correct, yes.
Okay, so, uh, 'cause it looked like if you, I think you went back, can you go two pitches forward?
Will you want to go to the roof plan?
Yes. It might have been the the one.
Right. Well, this is, so this is the roof plan. What I'm trying to show is this ten-foot area here where no dryer vents will be allowed to be.
Okay, no, no.
So they're all gonna have.
Okay, no, because at first I looked at it, it looked like it was shooting towards the street, but I I see it's 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 going vertically vertically into the air, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right. May- maybe I looked at the picture wrong. Okay, thank you.
Oh, I know what, I'm sorry, I know what you're looking at. If I can just, uh, most of the events will have a gooseneck at the top, just so water doesn't get into them. So that might have looked like it was shooting out, but it's just a gooseneck.
Okay, all righty. Then then you answered my question. I was gonna ask you why it ain't shooting out like that, but okay.
Okay, uh, and I I do have a a response from my client. Um, he's more than happy to keep, uh, the sign light only during hours of operation. He doesn't know what hours of operation are going to be. It's going to be the the maximum extent permitted under the local law.
Okay, okay, that works. Anybody else, any questions?
One quick question, uh, evening, gentlemen. I I know it was previously a car wash. Was there any environmental testing that needed to be done on the soil, or would there be any need for it if there's any contamination or anything like that?
I didn't do the closing for my client on this. That's typically part of of closing. He recently purchased it. Um, I I imagine he did a tank sweep. Um, there were no, there were no environmental issues, um, that my client raised to me. And I I also believe laundromats have to be licensed, so I I imagine that's also part of that that application.
Yeah, I just, to make sure, I know sometimes the car washes, there have been issues in the past with, you know, so it came in by grease or oils or heavy metals. I just want to make sure, necessarily capping that if it needs to be remediated, it will be.
Understood.
All right, anybody else, any questions? All right, thank you, counsel. That's your presentation?
That that concludes our presentation this evening.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is anybody from the public here that wants to comment? I see one hand raised.
Let him promote Jake.
And once again, if you're, uh, for the public and you want to comment, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Jake, you can come off mute whenever you want.
There we go. You guys hear me?
I can hear you. Are you able to turn your video on?
Uh, trying to start video.
Great, I think, uh, something happened.
Start my video, okay. Uh, it was working. Oh, there we go. Uh, there we go, all right. See me now?
Nah, uh, yeah.
There we go, all right.
Can you see me?
Hello, yes, I see you.
Okay, I just want to swear you in, okay?
Yes, sir.
Here is right, uh, do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, my name is Jake Gergis, first name J A K E, last name Gergis, G E R G U E S.
Okay, Mr. Gergis, uh, we have five minutes for you.
Okay, um, have there been a traffic study, uh, done for this site? Just using simple math, if he has thirteen parking spots approximately, uh, being that it's a fairly large facility with, um, uh, quick count when they're reviewing the plans, fifty to fifty washers. Um, the me, I'm a Jersey City resident. I'm on the west side, West Side Ave Special Improvement District, and we have a crucial issue with traffic, especially on that part of Communipaw Avenue from commu- from Kennedy Boulevard, crossing over to Wa- West Side and then so forth, going towards, uh, one nine four forty. Um, you know, just based upon basic math, you could have a potential of up to a hundred and fifty-something cars, um, that could, between a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five, actually. Um, that could impede traffic, being that it's a one-way street going both directions. Um, ha- has this been looked at in terms of, uh, imperative traffic? Um, just my my ca- my point is here, i- is this too much of a big facility on this section of Communipaw, um, avenue to accom- accommodate such a, um, uh, operation?
Okay, uh, do you have any other questions? I I like to list everybody's questions.
Oh, one shot, okay, not a problem.
Put it all in one shot.
Two, uh, my father's been in Jersey City since nineteen, um, sixty-four, and before it was a car wash, it was a mechanic shop. And, um, based upon the photos that I see on the plans here, um, you know, I'd like to see if the board would consider possibly looking into the environmental issues as opposed, you know, being that Communipaw Avenue is a long stream of mechanic shops and automotive and industrial uses uses. Um, you know, it's part of the improvement in the area. I'd like to see that, you know, if there is some sort of, uh, contamination that it to be remediated and, uh, cleaned up. Um, the other part I had was, um, if i- in the area, um, I'm with a lot of residences, and, um, there's quite a few laundry facilities in the area and under a mile, actually under eighth of a mile, you have a total of, uh, two hun- over two hundred and sixty-five washers within the area, and I I don't know if, being that if this is gonna cause such a traffic, uh, concern and and, uh, parking issue as well. Um, 'cause sixty washers, you can have, let's say, two people to a washer, you could have as many as thirty people, but if not more at a given time in that facility. So part, you know, if you look in the plans, you even see people parking in front of the driveway of the building. Um, and all and all over. I mean, if you all, I'm sure everyone knows Communipaw very well, and we know that it gets quite a bit of a cluster over there. So, um, I'm just concerned that some of that traffic might transition on a West Side Avenue, and as we all know, West Side Avenue, uh, is has a huge deficiency of parking and traffic, uh, traffic flow as it is already. So, um, my concern is that, um, i- it might disrupt people within the area commuting, driving, um, a- as it already has, um, already. Um, but yes, as I said, it's two hundred and something washers, that's already under a mile within the area. I I don't know if maybe this use, um, would be a little redundant to what the community would need. Um, as, you know, it'd be one thing if you see, you know, it all the seven or eight laundromats within under a mile would have a line out the door, in which case they don't. Um, based upon the air, you know, me being in the area. Um, uh, also with the laundry, uh, I don't, have they received a clearance from JCMUA in regards to this laundry facility not interfering with sewer? Um, as Communipaw Avenue, um, has currently a very bad sewer, which also connects into West Side Avenue, and also with the freshwater demand. Um, are our residences gonna, uh, be affected by the demand of this facility? Um, or, you know, uh, requiring such utilities within the area? Um, the other part was it in terms of venting, um, I don't see a specific venting detail. I know the architect said that it's ten feet away, but, you know, uh, i- is the gooseneck gonna be facing towards the ha- the windows that are next to the house that's immediately sharing, uh, the same retaining wall? Um, there is a window that is level to where that roof is, actually two windows, two to three windows, I do believe, if memory serves me right, looking at Google Earth. Um, you know, even though it's gooseneck and it's ten feet away, the the, um, the exhaust emission, you know, could still get to the window without a problem. Um, and I'm gonna assume that it's a, uh, are they gonna be individually vented, or is it gonna be in a manifold type style like you have, you know, with your boilers and multifamily units, that it's in a a manifold that goes right out to a chimney? Um, a- are these things gonna be affected by the residences that are living in the two-family home to the right and also the residents to the left?
Um, that's your five minutes, sir.
Uh, yep.
But we'll we'll get everything answered for you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
I have one question for the witness before we take him offline. Uh, Mr. Gergis, do you own any laundromats in the area?
Uh, my father does.
Your father does, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, counsel, um, if we could, let's, uh, address these. Actually, there's one that I think, uh, the board should address or planning should address. Um, as far as, you know, having too many laundry services in the area, i- it's a permitted use. Uh, the board really doesn't have jurisdiction over how many laundromats can open in an area. Um, as long as it's a permitted use, you know, we'll let the, uh, the chips fall and and, you know, let the economy take care of it, whether it's it's necessary or not. Uh, counsel, do you agree with that, that assessment?
I one hundred percent agree with that assessment.
Okay, uh, and if we could, let's, um, let's address the traffic study. Um, the environmental issue we've touched on, but maybe expand on it, and I do know that, um, in the engineering department's comments, uh, item number two on their comments are, uh, to provide an engineer's report to analyze water and sewer.
Yeah, so, um, number one, the the environmental, I I did speak with my client just now. He did do a tank sweep. There was no tank found at the property when he purchased. Um, the traffic impact study, I requested a waiver as part of my application. The application was deemed complete. We're here before you this evening. He, so the MUA, my client, has been working with the MUA for some time. Um, we're actually at the point right now where my client's application to the MUA is going to expire. Um, if we don't get approved tonight, and they're gonna have to renew it. So that they've been in communication with the MUA for a significant period of time regarding water. It's also been, uh, electrical is also an issue for laundromats. They've, they've discussed, uh, with the appropriate authorities how this facility is going to be powered, where they're gonna draw that power from. So that that's all been being taken care of. Um, and there are, there are communications between, um, the the applicant and and those agencies. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure if I missed anything in there. That's not a.
That was everything we had. That was everything I had for you. Okay, so let's move on with public. Uh, anybody else from public, if you could, raise your hand. If you were calling in, you can please press star nine to raise your hand. Once again, anybody from public, please raise your hand. If you're calling, press star nine.
You know, hands raised.
Okay, I'll entertain a, uh, motion to close public.
Chair, seeing no more public, I I move to close the public portion.
Second.
A motion is made and seconded. Public's closed. Okay, Cameron.
Okay, um, so firstly, to add on to some of the public's comments, um, I just looked at the NJDEPs known. um I just looked at the N J D E P's known contaminated sites list, and this site is not currently identified as a contaminated site by the state of New Jersey. Um, but either way, that's not something that actually we would through this board have control and ask for um an assessment prior to issuing a approv- approval or denial. But um, anyway, so firstly, I'm just gonna ask that the applicant agree to the staff memos conditions listed in the memo dated November sixth of twenty twenty.
The applicant agrees to those conditions, the applicant agrees to the conditions in the engineering comments. Um, in, in a, in addition to those conditions, we're agreeing to correct, correct the error in the existing lot coverage calculation on the final signature plans, we're agreeing to make the engineering comments on the final signature plans. And uh I'm, I'm sure counsel's going to add the condition that we merge these lots by deed, um since it's multiple lots, also as a condition.
And there is also the condition that the signage remains illuminated only during the hours of operation. But um, yeah, so we're gonna add that to the resolution and correct the signature sets. But um, you know, only other thing to add is that the applicant worked closely with the city forester on remedying some of the landscaping issues. Um, this corridor is a commercial corridor that permits retail uses. Um, up and down it, there are quite a redundancy in uses, and that's also something that staff and planning raised as a question to the applicant, but, you know, this is capitalism. Um, and with that, this meets the objectives and goals of the redevelopment plan, uh the planning department sees it a fitting use and recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Cameron.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero dash zero seven four, as presented to the board tonight.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay, Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Aye.
Okay, um Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
Commissioner Jeffrey Allen?
Aye.
Alright, um, I don't know why I log our commissioners here, hold on with me.
We're up to Commissioner.
Commissioner Horton's an aye.
Okay, okay, Commissioner Horton, thank you very much. Yeah, I was in a new view setting. Um, and help me here, Chairman, who's next?
Uh, that would be me, Lieutenant.
Oh, there we go, nice, and Chairman Langston.
That's an aye.
Okay, motion carries, all in favor with conditions.
Okay, you know. Alright, let's call case uh item fourteen is case P two zero dash one zero four, a minor site plan for one forty-five Bergen Avenue.
Is Tom Lee here? Or Patrick?
Hello?
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening. Uh, so we've got Jeff Lewis here already, uh which is wonderful. Um, so I'll just jump right in. Um, so I'm, uh my name is Patrick Conlon, I'm an attorney at Connell Foley on behalf of the applicant, one forty-five Bergen LLC. Um, the property here is one forty-five Bergen Avenue. Um, it's a four thousand six hundred ninety-six square foot lot, we're seeking minor site plan approval for a detached four-family building. Uh, there's about nine thousand eight hundred and four square feet, so this is a minor site plan. We are not seeking any variances, but we did notice for this, um and I believe that uh counsel should have that. We noticed for the November tenth meeting and it was carried.
Thank you, counsel, Chairman, I am and receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application. It was noticed for the November tenth meeting and carried to this evening's meeting with preservation of notice, all does appear to be in order, you can mark that as a one for the record.
Thank you, counsel. Great, okay, so um detached four-family dwellings are permitted on lots of this size in the R three zone. Um, so with that, I'd like to introduce our architect, Jeff Lewis.
And just for the record.
Hello again.
So has been sworn and qualified and remains under oath tonight.
Alright, Jeff, you take us through.
Great, okay, I'm gonna start by showing my drawings. Alright, so we're looking at one forty-five Bergen Avenue, proposing a new four-story four-family residential building. Uh, we're located on Bergen Avenue, you could see us here, we're actually a block away from the university. Uh, we are in the R three zone, and we are not requiring uh any variances for this project. Gonna move right to the site plan and walk through this a little bit. Um, so we're proposing new concrete curb, new concrete sidewalk, and one new street tree in front of the building. Uh, moving on to our property, we're proposing a new lawn in the center of the property, which would be two hundred and sixty square feet, with concrete pavers on each side, uh on the right side, that's going to uh the main entry to the building, and on the left side, it's going to the alley that goes towards to the back of the building. Uh, going on each side, we have alleys that are um concrete walkways with uh six-foot vinyl fence along the sides and along the rear of the property. And then looking into the backyard of the property, we have a six hundred and eighty-two square foot lawn area and a two hundred and sixty-one square foot uh stone patio area, and this area is for the ground-level unit. Um, let me, and I'm gonna move on to the floor plan and help explain this a little bit. So what we have is a walkout basement here, so we're three stories in the front, four stories in the back. So this first floor plan, and I'm gonna zoom in a little bit to make it a little easier to see. This first floor plan that we're calling the ground-level plan is um most is at-grade at the back, and then at the front here is, is a basement. So you access this unit through, from this walkway down the stairs, and then there's one door first that goes to the actual basement, and in this basement, we have uh four storage spaces, one for each unit, and then our sprinkler room, because this is a fully sprinkled building, and all of our meter rooms. Uh, going, uh continuing down this walkway, you come to the main entry to this apartment. And so what we have with this apartment is a um ground-level unit that is four bedrooms, four baths, one thousand five hundred and eighty-six square feet. And so you enter, enter the apartment into an open kitchen, uh dining, living room area, which also has a coat closet and a washer dryer off of it. And then uh besides that, we have four en suite uh bedrooms, two to the left, two to the right. Uh, each of them has a walk-in closet, its own bathroom, and its own linen closet. And then, as mentioned before, there's the terrace, I mean, the patio and lawn area in the rear, which is also accessed uh from the walkway for this unit. Looking at the ground, the first floor unit, which is at ground level at the front of the building, uh we enter the building down here at the bottom, uh and then we have a lobby that leads to the main stair and entry to the first floor unit. Uh, this first floor unit is our ADA adaptable unit. Um, and it is a total of two thousand eighteen square feet, and it is uh designed similar to the other unit, only larger. So we have an open kitchen, living, dining area, and then a sec- and a second eating area that actually has a small balcony off of this, so we're trying to get each of these units their own outside space. Uh, so we have the balcony off of this unit, also a half-bath, washer dryer, uh ducted uh furnace, because we are doing uh ducted heat and air conditioning for all of these units. And then again, at the front and the back, each have, there's four total, two in the front, two in the back of en suite bedrooms with uh walk-in closets and their own bathrooms, same as before. Going down to the second floor plan, it's a similar plan. Uh, however, it is a larger, it is still four and a half uh bathroom, four-bedroom plan, it's larger because we're losing, we don't have to worry about the the um entry lobby here, the entry hallway, so we're gaining space there. We are a total of two thousand one hundred and seventy-eight square feet on this floor. Uh, and what we did to use that space better is we made the bedroom bigger, the walk-in closet and bathroom work a little better, and we have a new utility closet for the washer dryer and uh utilities, which makes our open space uh for the living room a little bit larger. Moving up to the third floor, we once again have the same as before below, the second floor, with one exception, uh we are moving uh this uh doorway a little forward so that the stair, which continues up to the roof, is actually inside the third floor unit. So the third floor unit will have their private balcony like, like the second floor and first floor unit have, but then also, looking at the roof plan, have the stair going up to the roof and have access to this uh new roof deck, which is a four hundred and sixty square foot roof deck. Uh, besides the roof deck, on the front and the back of the building, uh it's just a flat roof with uh rooftop condensers on the rear section. Scrolling down to the building elevations, I'm showing the front and the rear here. So as you can see, three stories in the front, and then you get that fourth story uh back here in the rear. And um the building materials we're posing are, the main material is a uh brown-red brick with a smooth finish. Uh, the two bays here are uh light, warm gray hardy panels, and then all of our windows are uh composite uh windows uh that are black frames, with black frame windows. Um, the entry door is a dark gray modern entry door with a glass panel. And um, I'm then moving, looking at the rear, we have the same windows, uh except uh as far as the, the building finish, we're using uh gray vinyl siding, uh and then a stucco finish on the bottom uh base here. Then, switching to the sides, uh you can see the balconies on the side here, uh we're doing again gray stucco, I mean gray stucco at the base, uh gray vinyl siding uh above. And um then the last side is the same again, and what you can see here, you can understand the stair coming down, this is the basement door, and then this is the entry door to the ground-level apartment, which is also that same uh modern front entry door that we have on the, the main building entry. Um, and so that's um, that's my presentation, uh if you have any questions, um you can answer them.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Lewis, um there are just two quick questions, I think, um there's condenser units on the roof?
That's right, yes.
Okay, so there's no P-TAC units or anything like that in the, in the.
No, 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 this is, we have furnaces in the unit, uh ducted heat and air conditioning uh with four condensers on the roof, one for each unit.
Okay, excellent, um the only other question I have is if you could um go over the, the waterproofing on the, the bulkhead stair. Uh, I'm, I, I think I'm correct to say that there's, there's no doorway in the top-floor apartment, correct? Like um that leads to the roof, that's just an open staircase?
Open, no, 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 there's no open staircase, this stair here? You can see, um I think you can see it on the front elevation, the stair is enclosed and it has vinyl siding on all, on all uh.
No, I understand that, that it's a, you know, there's a bulkhead on the roof for the stair. Um, but there's no.
Right here.
There's no door from the third floor uh apartment going up to that stair, correct?
Well, what, yeah, what we did is, if you look at the second floor, the door is here to get into the apartment. And what we did is we moved that door to be at the center of the stair here, so you come to this landing, enter into the apartment, and if you wanna, you can keep going up, and that's actually inside the apartment, so it's separated from the stair below.
So my question is, um, you know, how do you prevent water from coming in that stair bulkhead door up on the roof?
This right here?
Yeah.
Um, generally, uh what, well, this doesn't have to be handicap accessible, so the first thing I'd like to do is just give this like a eight-inch threshold, like height, height-wise. So it doesn't, it doesn't have to actually be at-grade, so you keep that a little higher, so water's not gonna be pouring in. And then obviously pitching everything not towards it is helpful.
Okay. Yeah, that answers my question, that's fine. Um, anybody else, any questions?
I just have one.
Go ahead, Jeffrey.
Uh, I, I see the numbers for the setback on the right side with the balcony, I just can't uh read them. Could you tell me what they are in between the two buildings, the right side with the balcony?
The spaces in the buildings?
Yes.
Sure, let me go, I'll go to the site plan and make sure I give you the exact right numbers. I believe it's three feet and two feet, but I wanna give you the exact numbers to be sure. Is there really enough dimension here? I'm sorry, I thought I had the dimension right on here, and I don't see it now.
Do have it listed in the.
Oh, here we go, here we go, it's, it's uh three foot, three foot one on the right-hand side, and actually a little more, it looks like it's a little more than four feet on the left-hand side.
Okay, and, and the balconies aren't facing in any windows of the building?
No, actually, this is actually helpful that I came here, because you could see the, this building end right here, and this is where the balconies are.
Okay, I couldn't see. Okay.
Yeah, no, I didn't show it, it's my fault.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else, any questions? Alright, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Uh, counsel, anything else from you?
That's all, thank you very much.
Thank you, uh alright, at this time, we will open it up for public, is anybody here from the public that wants to comment? If you could, please raise your hand if you wanna speak, uh if you are calling in, press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody at all from public?
Mr. Chair seeing no public, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Um, whose application is this?
Cameron's.
It's Cameron's again, okay, Cameron, do you have anything uh comments?
Um, firstly, usual, asking if the applicant agree on the record to conform with all of the staff conditions dated in our report from November eighteenth, twenty twenty?
Yes.
Alright, um and as the board may or may not have recognized, this is actually a previous application that came to us, which originally was um a subdivision, which in essence could have created two lots with two of these buildings on it. Um, and now what we have in front of us is a fully conforming project with very spacious, spacious units, um which we like to see, which is, you know, more diversity in our housing market in Jersey City. Um, and with that, um no variances, conforms, the planning department recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Cameron.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero dash one zero four, as presented to the board here tonight.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for approval.
Alright, so Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Uh, nice building, aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
Commissioner Horton?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Uh, yeah, great job, guys, I, I can't remember the last time we saw units that large, and uh, you know, four bedrooms is obviously something we don't see often, so I, I'm just gonna vote aye.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, thank you, Cameron.
That's all.
Bye-bye.
Uh, alright, let's move on to case P one nine dash one nine one is a minor site plan for fifty-seven Virginia Ave.
Good evening, everyone, uh Mookti is my architect this evening.
He should be here, you can proceed.
Okay, great, um Stephen Joseph of the Toronto Law Firm for the applicant. This is the fifty-seven Virginia Avenue, it's located one lot in from the corner of M L K in Virginia in Zone One of the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan. This one's a little strange, because it's a, it's a small irregular lot, and under the land development ordinance, this wouldn't require site plan approval, since it's under five thousand square feet of floor area, but because it's in the redevelopment plan, we do require minor site plan approval. There, uh the applicant's proposing five stories and three units within that five stories, there's no variances or. There's no variances or deviations being requested. Mukti is our only expert this evening.
And counsel, for the record, I note that this was a notice case. It was noticed for the November 10th hearing. I've reviewed the notice. It does appear to be in order. So we can mark that as A1.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Mukti, let me just swear again, all right?
Yeah.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you just state and spell your name, please?
Mukti Bajaj, M-U-K-T-I. Last name is Bajaj, B-A-J-A-J.
Ms. Bajaj, good evening. I don't think we've seen you online yet, have we?
Yeah, no, not yet.
Okay, so we've qualified you in the past. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay, you're qualified.
Okay, thank you. I'll just go ahead and start sharing the screen. So 57 Virginia Avenue, this is a very tiny, small lot. The square foot area of the lot is 834 square feet. This is in between MLK Drive and Bergen Avenue. This is turnkey, sorry, Jackson Hill redevelopment zone. The lot width is 20 feet and the lot depth is just 38 feet. The six stories is permitted. What we are proposing is a five story building with three units. The square foot area, basically there are no side yard requirements. And the front yard, we comply with the front yard, which is to the curb, or curb, which is 10 feet. Rear yard is not required as well, but we are providing three feet for the windows. This is, lot is unique in the sense, one side is the Virginia Avenue and back of, of the rear, we have a railroad or the light rail station there. The existing is one story commercial, which will be demolished and three, three units will be proposed there. The square foot area of the first floor is 769 square feet from first to fourth floor. And the fifth floor is set back and the area is 466 square feet. So A2 is, it shows the site plan. This is the existing survey, which shows the existing one story structure. There's a proposed site plan, which is almost 100% coverage with the setback at the back and a five story proposed building. We're also proposing a new sidewalk and one tree and the client will be redoing the front sidewalk. I'll zoom in the plans. So as I mentioned, this is a very tiny project. We have a partial cellar where we have a garbage room, sprinkler room, bike parking and the mechanical. On the first floor, towards the left of the property is the entrance to the building. And there's only unit one is the only unit, which is a single level. Both the other units, two and three are duplex with the mezzanine. So the unit one is also two bedroom, one bath and the square foot area, the net area is 520 square feet. Well, the unit two and unit three are with a similar layout. They are like two bedroom, two bath and with a small office. So the first level is two bed, one bedroom office and one bath. And there's a spiral staircase, this goes up and you have a second bedroom at the mezzanine level with a small covered terrace at the back. The square foot area of the unit two and unit three with a similar layout is approximately 777 square feet. So this is the fourth floor, which is unit three. And similar, so it has a kitchen, living, dining and a small office and a second bedroom. And the first bedroom is on the fifth floor with the attached bathroom, a common terrace and a front rooftop deck. The roof, the common roof just has a compressors on the roof and it's accessible for, for all the units. So there's no rooftop deck, common rooftop deck proposed. This is the front facade of the building. It shows a five story building. Fourth, fifth floor is set back. We have just used a traditional brick and, and a black metal siding with the black windows, which are modern, yet little industrial look to the windows. As far as other side yard, side facades and the back facade, they'll be finished with the vinyl siding, the light gray vinyl siding and lighter gray stucco on the first floor. I think that pretty much concludes my testimony. So I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Bajaj. The rooftop is only accessible from the, the fifth floor unit, correct? The fourth and fifth floor unit?
Yeah, this is a private rooftop deck only for unit number three.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the, the condenser units are where they're, they're not on that fifth floor level, correct? They're on the, the stair bulkhead?
Yeah, that's correct. They are on the stair bulkhead. So this, this portion where we have a bedroom number one for unit three, about that, there's a stair, staircase bulkhead and that roof has the condensers.
Okay.
So this is a lower roof.
Are they, are the, the condenser screened at all?
Yeah, we have provided a screen around the condenser.
Okay.
Screen and the gate.
Those are my only questions. Anybody else? Any questions?
Yeah, me just one. Good, good evening.
Good evening.
I see on the first level, I see two doors to the patio. Is the patio exclusive, exclusively for the first floor tenant or is, is for the whole building?
No, this patio, patio is only for the first floor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, so those are windows?
Upper floor has the windows.
Oh, so those are, those are doors, patio doors?
Yeah, on the first floor.
Oh, oh, go on to the bedroom. Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Any questions? Okay, counsel, anything else?
That concludes our presentation.
Okay, thank you, guys. Thank you, Ms. Bajaj.
Thank you.
Okay, if anybody's here from public at this time, if you want to comment, please raise your hand. If you were calling in and you'd like to comment, please press star nine. Anybody from public, please raise your hand.
Chair saying no public, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Public's closed. Cameron, do you have any, any additional comments?
Okay, well firstly, just recognizing the idiosyncrasies with this application. It's pretty interesting and probably something that you see at a zoning board meeting. But this application's using the transit station height bonus, which actually would allow them to go to six stories. But anyway, you know, planning staff thinks it's interesting and all that we ask is that the applicant agree to the conditions listed in the staff report dated November 20th, 2020.
The applicant agrees to the conditions.
All right, and with, with that, staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Cameron.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P19-191 as presented to the board here tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
All right, Vice Chair Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye, nice building.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
Commissioner Horton?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Yeah, I agree with Jeffrey. This is a really great project. I'm gonna vote aye. Nice job, Mr. Bajaj.
Thank you.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you, Cameron.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Mike, are you okay for one more application?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, we'll take a break right before the redevelopment plan hearings. All right, so let's call case P20-006 for 244 Clinton Avenue.
Hello, Peter Chet Janini on behalf of the applicant.
And counsel?
Good evening. This was originally noticed for the November 17th meeting. It was, it was carried with notice to tonight. This is a 50 by 90 lot on Clinton Avenue. Half of the lot is vacant and the other has an existing older house on it. So the applicant seeks to subdivide it into two 25 by 90 lots and build a two family house on the lot that's currently vacant. So our witness is going to be Jay Jang. So I'd like to call him at this time.
Can you repeat the name?
Jay, it's architect Jay Jang. J-A-E, J-A-N-G.
I don't see that.
Let me just, if you don't mind, counsel, I'm gonna just make sure.
See someone E-U-N-H-U-R? Is that part of?
I'll, I'll ask him who it is.
Okay.
E-U-N-H-R, yes, that's it. That's the right one.
Okay.
Can you, you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, counsel, are you ready to move forward? Do you want me to swear my name?
Yes, please.
All right, sir, are you, well, let me just swear you in real quick, okay? Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear any testimony that you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name for me, please?
J.J., first name J-A-E, last name J-A-N-G.
Thank you.
Mr. Jen, good evening. I don't believe we've ever qualified you, have we?
No, this is my first time.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, go ahead, counsel.
Mr. Jang, how long have you been a licensed architect in New Jersey?
13 years now.
And is your license in New Jersey current and in good standing?
Yes, it is.
And are you familiar with this application and all the relevant laws and ordinances related to it?
Yes, I am.
Okay, counsel, that's good enough for us. You're qualified, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Jang, would you like to start your?
Sure.
Testimony, yep.
Yes, let me just share my screen. Okay. So, everyone can see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Yes, okay. So the, the property is on 244 Clinton Avenue, Jersey City, between West Side Avenue and JFK LeBar. Which is our one zone. The building is on the, something like Peter mentioned, it's on the subdivided portion of the lot. This is the three story residential building for two family home with a, with a two parking spaces on the ground floor. The two units are both two bedroom, two bathroom units. Each unit is about 925 square feet. And so it, it has a shared entrance in the ground floor and you walk up, one flight up to get to the first unit and then you walk up another flight up to get to the second unit. And this is building elevation. Where the first, the lower third of the building is a gray brick and then the upper portion is a, between, between the vinyl siding and brown stucco material. And has a pitch move. So we are requesting two variances for the subdivided lot because there's a hardship on the site. Like Pierre said, the adjoining requirements is 25 by 100 is the minimum lot size. But we only, the existing lot size, lot depth is only 90 feet. So the, which, which prevents us getting the minimum lot size as well. Oh, we only get 2250 square feet versus 2500 square feet. We were originally also asking for the rear yard setback, but after speaking to commissioner, other planner, we decided to reposition the, the building so that we don't, we are not required, we are not requesting the rear yard setback anymore. Yeah. I believe that this, you know, the variance is not gonna substantially impair the zoning ordinances or the master plan for the neighborhood. Because, I mean, the existing last size is only 90 feet and all other, a lot of, a lot of other properties in the same street has a 90 feet that last size as well. So we are trying our best to fit the building within the site that we were given, so.
So, so, so we're seeking two variances at this point, one for undersized, for, one for lot area, one for lot depth. And the original rear yard, rear yard setback variance that we were requesting is no longer required because we've moved the, the building forward. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, does the, do the commissioners have any questions of the witness?
Actually, yeah, the, I'm sorry, Mr. Jang, I lost my train of thought for a second. We qualified you tonight as an architect. You're not a planner, correct?
I'm not a planner.
Okay, so just for the commissioners, his planning testimony on the variances, it's, it's acceptable, but it's not expert testimony. So just for the record, that's, you know, Mr. Jang is qualified tonight as an architect, not a planner. So that's not expert testimony. But that was my only question. So anybody else? Any questions?
Okay, counsel, anything else from you?
Nothing further.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we'll open it up for public. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment, please raise your hand. If you are calling in and you'd like to comment on this application, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public?
Chair saying no public, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to close public and we are closed. I don't have it open. I believe this is Cameron. Yeah, Cameron, do you have anything to add?
Well, to further expand on the bulk variances for the existing undersized lot. This block, starting at lot 46, going all the way down to lot 60, all have, actually lot 61 have all depths of 90 feet. So just to give you an idea, this is an existing structure of the lot configuration on this block. Planning staff does not feel that the existing non-conforming slight 10 feet shorter than normal lot depth will substantially impact or be a detriment to the zoned plan. But adding on that, planning staff asked that the applicant agree to the conditions from the November 13th staff report.
I guess we do.
All right, and just wanted to add that they've already gone and done some renovations to the existing home 244 Clinton and maybe a coincidental, but the house went from red to blue, which might be a metaphor or foreshadowing some recent political happenings. But anyway, with the applicant's agreement to the conditions in the staff report dated November 13th, some recent political happenings, but anyway, with the applicant's agreement to the conditions in the staff report dated November thirteenth, um, planning staff feels that the variances here are de minimis and recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Ca- Cameron, uh, just for your comments, not your political commentary, but, uh, thank you. Okay.
There, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero, there's zero zero six is presented to the board here tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
All right, so commissioner, well, vice chair Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
All right, motion carries with conditions.
Thank you, board.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, uh, we are gonna take a ten-minute break, everybody. I see Don Pepe's hand is raised, I don't know what that's all about. We're getting to you, Don. And, uh, when we come back, we're gonna hear the, uh, redevelopment plan for, uh, Water Street, one hundred Water Street, okay? Uh, it is seven oh seven now, we'll be back at seven seventeen. Counsel, good evening, just give us one second until everybody's back.
Take your time, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, all right, let's call, um, item seventeen on the agenda tonight. Uh, the review and discussion of amendments to the Water Street redevelopment plan regarding the split zone sites, Route four forty widening, Water Street improvements and transfer of floor area. Uh, the amendments were petitioned by one hundred Water Street LLC. Formal action may be taken and this was carried from the November seventeenth meeting.
Good evening, commissioners and Mr. Chairman, uh, good evening, counsel. As you know, my name is Jim McCann from the law firm of Connell Foley in Jersey City. Uh, I am here tonight appearing on behalf of the applicant, one hundred Water Street Development LLC. Uh, this is an application that is seeking, uh, an amendment to the Water Street redevelopment plan. As such, the relief requested, uh, is simply that the planning board issue a favorable recommendation to the Jersey City Municipal Council, uh, for a final determination on this amendment by the council. As you know, um, for redevelopment plan amendments, only the Jersey City Municipal Council can make the final decision. The planning board, uh, issues its recommendation on the amendments to the council. For the record, uh, the Water Street redevelopment plan did not require that this applicant provide any special notice to the public in preparation for tonight's hearing, uh, so none has been provided. The applicant's filings in this matter are all, uh, posted on the planning department's web portal. Uh, they consist of a letter app, application filed by the applicant to the director of planning dated September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty. Uh, handful of exhibits, some of which you will see tonight, uh, and the text of the proposed amendment to the redevelopment plan. Uh, and also for the record, the applicant didn't pay the filing fee required by the redevelopment plan. Uh, in terms of the planning division's response, the applicant, uh, and myself have been working with Matt Ward from the planning division to, uh, fine tune the concept, uh, behind this amendment as well as the language that's gonna be presented to you. Uh, in terms of council outreach, uh, I can state for the record that the applicant has met a number of times with councilwoman Prinzari. Uh, this is her ward and that she supports this application. In terms of a presentation tonight, I have a handful of slides, uh, to, to show the board, uh, where the property is, what the amendment is. Um, and then I have, uh, Ed Colling, uh, who is gonna give planning testimony explaining to you the amendment as well as the community benefits associated therewith. I have two witnesses, my first witness is Rob Giannoni, he is a, a, a development representative, development manager for the applicant. He's running the slideshow for us tonight. I will ask him a few questions about a few pictures that were taken, um, and then I have Ed Colling. So having said that, I'm gonna give you a brief, uh, introduction. What you see on the screen in front of you right now, uh, is an aerial view, uh, of the applicant's site. This, uh, this, uh, aerial view map has been on record with the planning department and has been presented this board a number of times since two thousand seventeen, when we've appeared here for this project. Uh, you can see that the site, uh, which is bordered in yellow there, uh, to the north, there's Clark Avenue. Uh, to the south, there's Claremont, and then, uh, of particular importance to tonight's presentation, you can see the project is, uh, the site is bordered on the west by first Water Street, uh, and then Route four forty. And you can see sandwiched in between Water Street and Route forty, uh, there are, there are some real property that is owned privately, uh, with some improvements thereon. Rob, you could take us to the next slide, please. This is a tax, a current tax map, uh, of this area. This is on the planning department web portal as part of this application. Uh, the purpose of this is to just give you a better look at the, uh, actual, the applicant's development site. Uh, this is also representative of a subdivision that this board granted to the applicant in two thousand seventeen. And Rob, if you can show us, uh, block two zero seven three zero. Uh, that's part of the development site. That's lot two oh one, below that is lot three oh one, which is a street infrastructure lot. Uh, that was created pursuant to the subdivision. The applicant is connecting Yale Avenue, um, which is currently a dead end to Clark Avenue at the intersection of Bennett, uh, and the applicant is also building a roadway that connects Yale Avenue to Claremont Avenue to the south. Other development lots that were created by the subdivision are on block two zero seven zero four. You can see lot one, uh, where the cursor is, and then to the north of that, you can see lot two. Now, all the lots that I just, uh, pointed out to you, uh, this board in two thousand seventeen granted a site plan approval to the applicant uh, for the construction of a mixed-use community on the, on this site with residential, uh, commercial, um, uh, permitted parking as well as interim parking. Uh, you may recall, a couple of months ago, we appeared here on the, the site that's lot two oh one. Those buildings, there, that building is under construction in two parts. And then on, uh, the, uh, property to the south, uh, lot one, there's an interim parking lot a- as well as lot two, but there are no permanent improvements, uh, constructed on those sites as of yet. Now, the real important part of this tax map, you can see, uh, to the west, you can see there are two colorized lots. Uh, the first one is in, um, block two zero seven zero one, that's lot four, you can see that it's in light blue. And to the south of that is, uh, lot five in that same block, that is in orange. Those are the, uh, lots that I pointed out to you in the original aerial that are sandwiched between Water Street and Route four forty. And I will tell you for the record, as the applicant's attorney, that the owner of each of those lots had approached the applicant and asked if the applicant would purchase their property. And the applicant has accepted the offer of both property owners to purchase their property. As such, um, the applicant has an interest in both of those properties as we speak tonight. And most of the presentation that Ed Colling is gonna, uh, explain to you about the amendment is gonna discuss these two lots. Now, just to give you a better idea of those lots, we have taken a few pictures, which would be the next, uh, series of slides, and, um, which would be the next series of slides, and Rob Gianoni, are you out there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Mike, can you swear?
Hi Rob, let me just swear you in, alright?
Yep.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you just state and spell your name, please?
Sure, Robert Gianoni, R O B E R T, Gianoni is G I A N N O N E.
Good evening, Mr. Gianoni, and you're testifying on behalf of the applicant. You're not being qualified as an expert in any way tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Before we jump in, Jim, can we just, I think some of the, are you going to mark all this as one, I see fourteen slides?
So there's only three pictures, three photographs, we'll mark them all as whatever you say, we can mark them all together.
Okay, sounds good, just describe them and we'll mark them.
Sure, Rob, can you identify the, this slide that's on the screen right now?
Yeah, absolutely, so this photo is taken from the median of Route four forty, looking north.
But Rob, just real quick, did you take that picture?
I did take that photo on November seventeenth.
Okay, and let me ask you just a couple of quick questions, in the background of that photo, there's a building there called the Agnes, is that part of the applicant's project?
Correct, that's Phase one point one.
Okay, and then to the north of that, there's another building, is that part of the applicant's project?
That is not, no.
Right, that's a separate project on the other side of Clark Avenue, correct?
Correct, that's sixteen Bennett.
Okay, and then what's the green building to, to the north and, and the white building immediately south of it?
Sure, so, so the, the green roofed building here is a fruit market that is on Lot five, Block two zero seven oh one. And just to the south of it, it's actually not a permanent structure, it's a temporary tent that they have, depending on the weather, which is just an extension of the fruit market space all the way down into this fence line here, which is an outdoor portion of the fruit market space as well.
And that would be Lot four then?
Lot four begins after this fence line, correct?
Okay, and, and that, of course, that's Route four forty right there in the foreground, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then, and that site that we just described, that's the site that the applicant is purchasing from the owner, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then, can you show us the next picture? Did you also take this photograph?
I did, same day.
Same day, November seventeenth, two thousand twenty, okay, and is this the other lot, is this?
Correct, this is, this is Lot five where the, it's used as a pseudo parking lot.
Parking lot.
Correct.
Okay, again, right on four forty and in the background is the applicant's project, correct?
Correct.
Alright, one more slide. Okay, did you take this picture, Rob?
November seventeenth, two thousand twenty.
Okay, and, and this basically shows Route four forty, and it shows in the distance, at first it shows Lot four, then it shows Lot five. I'm sorry, backwards, first it shows Lot five, then it shows Lot four, no curbs at all, and it shows the kind of informal jackpot parking lot that's there on Route four forty.
That is correct.
Okay, alright, I don't have any further questions of Rob about these pictures, Matt, can we mark these as, I guess, A one?
Yes, please.
And Mr. Gianoni, just for the record, please don't stand on the median on Route four forty anymore.
Absolutely, that was a one-time instance.
Okay, good.
With your back to traffic.
Anything to get, anything to get an approval. Don't tell, don't tell him that, we might have to send him out there again. Alright, my next witness is Ed Colling.
Hi Ed, do you hear me?
Yes, I do.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
My first name is Edward, last name is Colling, spelled K O L L I N G.
Mr. Colling, good evening, we've qualified you in the past, obviously, I hate to even ask you, but is your license current tonight?
Yes, yes, my license is current and paid up to date.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Ed, you're the planner for this project?
Yes, sorry, yes I am.
And, and up on the screen right now is the proposed amendment that we're asking this board to, to take action on tonight, correct?
That's correct.
And, and did you, myself and the applicant prepare this amendment?
Yes, yes we did, we worked together on it.
Okay, alright, would you be kind enough to, to walk the board through the amendment, and if you need us to, to move back to the tax map or the photos, we'll be happy to do it, but.
Right, you know, what I'll do is sort of briefly just kind of discuss an oversight, overview of it. I mean, this has been submitted to the board, after I do the overview, we can go through the individual items if the board would like, or they can, they can decide if they want to move forward with it. But just to give the brief overview, the, these amendments are really relatively straightforward. What you see on, before you hear now, is just an introductory paragraph. It just sort of explains the purpose of the amendments, and that is to facilitate the widening of Route four forty, and as to accommodate the proposed four forty boulevard as envisioned in the New Jersey City master plan. It's also referenced in the land development ordinance, it's something that the city has been working on as a long-term goal and objective for some time. I also want to point out that these amendments do not create any new development rights. What they're simply intended to do is to take the development that's permitted, the floor area that are on lots four and five on Block two oh seven oh one, and just to transfer them across the street to lots one and two on Block two oh seven oh four. There's also going to be no new bulk standards or reduction in setback standards or anything like that, except that the permitted height on Lot two only would be allowed to go up three more stories. Currently permitted there is twelve stories, we're, we're seeking to make that fifteen stories, and that's basically simply to accommodate the floor area that could have been built on lots four and five at the height of, of twelve stories there as well. We felt that Lot one was the best, or Lot two, I'm sorry, was the best place to put the additional floor area because it's the most distant from the existing neighborhood. It's shielded from the existing neighborhood by development that's already been approved by this, the same developer, and therefore would have the least amount of impact, and it's simply three more stories on what is really the smallest parcel in the, in the development. There also would be, the benefit of that really is that it eliminates the cost of acquisition for lots four and five. If, and, and what by, what would this development or this amendment would do? It's basically the developer will agree to transfer the land to the city, and therefore there's no cost of acquisition, there's no need to use eminent domain, there's less legal fees, sorry Jim, so, fill us legal fees, it'll be accrued, and it hopefully will all work more smoothly together. There's also substantial improvement, so it's not just the land. These amendments will, will require the developer to make certain improvements to the, to Water Street. Would include new curbing, new street paving, new stormwater improvements, streets trees, landscaping, bike lanes, sidewalks to enhance pedestrian safety. The curb cuts along the, and driveways along four forty that you saw in those photographs, that would all be eliminated, new curbing would go there. And all these improvements will be done in the public right-of-way, or what will become the public right-of-way, and those will be enhancements that'll be a community resource available to the general public, just as any other public street or right-of-way in Jersey City. Some of these improvements will implement the Route four forty boulevard as envisioned right from the beginning, such as separating four forty from that, the, that, that parking area, if you want to call it that, and closing up the, those open curb cuts and things like that, that'll create the differentiation between the through lanes and Water Street, which is going, which is a more of a local street, and is envisioned as more of a local street in the improvements that are being envisioned for the whole thing. So, these improvements also, they're not part of, of this, this amendment necessarily in terms of the detail of them because they are, have to be designed in consultation with Jersey City Planning, Division of Engineering, the Department of Transportation. They'll all be part of the evolution of the, of the design process, and will be brought to the planning board as part of the future developments that are, that are being proposed on lots one and two, where the transfer developments rights are going to go. So, at the end of the day, the developer will dedicate the entirety of lots four and five to the city to be used in the ultimate expansion of Route four forty, and will make, will agree to make at a sole cost and expense the improvements that are outlined in the amendments. We can go through those amendments, the board has not reviewed them, and so I'll refer to the board first to ask what, if you'd like to go through that.
So, Ed, before, before we end, Rob, can you just bring up the tax map again? Just if I can summarize it in a nutshell, Ed, what you're saying is the colorized lots, the, the ones in blue and orange, what we're asking for in the amendment is to take the floor area rights from those two lots and move them across the street over to Lot one and two, correct?
That's correct, lots four and five are about twelve thousand square feet plus or minus, and there's something over ninety-three thousand square feet of floor area that, that would be then moved over. And the value of those would have to be obviously purchased if this is going to be done conventionally through eminent domain and, and the acquisition of the right-of-way and that sort of stuff.
And, and so the reason this is important is because the city already has a plan in place for the eventual widening of Route four forty, correct?
Yes, there is, there is a plan.
And in order to do that, they would have to acquire these two lots?
Exactly.
Okay, so, so our client is going to acquire them and agree to dedicate them at no cost to the city as part of this amendment, correct?
That's correct.
And, and in addition, our client is agreeing to make improvements to Water Street and to those lots that will be consistent with the Route forty, four forty widening, as well as provide some parking and a very much spruced up Water Street for the public's use, correct?
Correct, Water Street will be improved, the, the curbing especially on the east side will be located in the appropriate location. The curbing along New Jersey Route four forty will be an appropriate location. In between there, there, the amount of space that will be allocated will be sufficient to accommodate all the improvements that are envisioned in the long term. And in the near term, there'll be improvements for sidewalk, street trees, everything that I enumerated before, as well as public parking, because it'll be, become part of the public right-of-way, just like any other right-of-way in the city, and the, the community residents, neighbors, whatever, can, can use that, that street as they would use any other right-of-way for driving, for parking, for the bike lanes or the pedestrian ways.
So there's a long-term public benefit and both a short-term public benefit?
Correct.
Okay, and the reason we often come with a concept plan that shows exactly what we're doing when we have an amendment, we don't have one tonight because we've agreed with the planning division that the developer is going to work in concert with Mr. Ward or whoever else in planning to work on the, a mutually desirable way to develop that area for both permanent and temporary improvements, correct?
That's, that's correct, there, there is a cross-section, I believe, in the, in the master plan. There may even be some, some of that in the land development ordinance, but those things evolve over time as, as projects come to fruition, and we would certainly want to be consistent with whatever the most up-to-date and requirements, indoor goals and objectives are.
And as I said, the, the applicant already has a site plan approval for lots one and two. Once the development lights, the FAR rights transfer over, it could come back and ask for an amendment if it wants to, to develop those two lots with the additional FAR, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, alright, Chairman, I don't have any more questions for, for, for Ed. If, if the board wants to focus more on the amendment, we can, but that's basically our presentation.
Okay, thank you Counsel, um, actually, I will defer to Matt Ward. Matt, I, I mean, I've gone over this plan, you've gone over this plan. Do, do you think Mr. Colling's testimony in the presentation is, is sufficient, or do you want to actually get into, you know, line-by-line presentation on the, the plan?
I think it was a very good coverage given by the testimony here tonight. The thing I would add is that Lot four and five are fully within the, the setback line for the Route four forty. And just to expand on some of the design discussion, so, the board may be familiar through applications or just through driving that corridor, some of the temporary buffers with certain sites. Recent applications include the self-storage building near Communipaw, or the Starbucks just north of this area on Clark, on the other side of Clark Street. Close, perhaps the Home Depot or Ray Moore Flanagan site have a setback implemented. And as discussed, the, the design may be more in flux, especially since the front may be implemented in, in the near future, and its roads actually may be starting construction. And effort, which should be coming before the board soon, there will be, there has been some greater thought, more recent thought into the section of, of the Route four forty boulevard. So that was testified to tonight, and I don't know if we need to get much further into mechanisms of this amendment, and, and we could move toward a public comment.
Okay, yeah, I'll defer to the board, I'm satisfied with the testimony, I think it covered the, the amendment very well. So, anybody, any questions, any questions from the board?
Mr. Tram, good with the explanation Mr. Colling made as well?
Okay. Alright, so if we have no questions, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody wants to comment, please raise your hand, anybody from the public. If you are calling in, you can press star nine, I see one hand raised.
Counsel, perhaps we could stop the screen share? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi Chris, are you able to turn your video on?
Uh, yes. Hold on. Hold this thing, okay.
Alright, I just want to swear you in before you get started, okay?
Yep.
Can you raise your right hand?
Other right.
Do you swear any testimony you're going to give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Uh, yes.
And for the record, could you just state and spell your name, please?
Chris Gadsden, C H R S, G A D S D E N.
Chris, good evening, don't worry about the hand, everybody does the same thing, and we have five minutes for you.
No, I just had just some clarifying questions about lots four and five. I heard you said that these lots will eventually be dedicated to the city so that it will allow for the expansion of Route four forty or, or the widening of it, but then you also said that they could also, well, I don't know if I heard you say that there, there could be also development on lots four and five. So, I would like to just know, would it be developed or will it just be left alone and eventually be incorporated into the widening of Route four forty? And then also, being that I haven't been attending these meetings frequently, I would like to see how that portion of One Hundred Waters, you know, the Water Street project, how did that look? Like, how did that expansion look, how did that parcel of land, how would that be incorporated in the expansion of, you know, Route four forty? So, I guess in Route four and five, and lots one and five, would there be any development on top of the land? Because I heard you say that you're going up a couple of stories, is that on lots one and two, or is? Is that on lots one and two, or is that going to take place in four and five? And if four and five eventually be dedicated to the city, how would that expansion look on Route 440? Those are just questions I have.
Commissioner, I think I can answer Chris's questions.
Okay.
Unless you want Matt Ward to, that's fine.
No, no, before I uh. Um before we let Chris go, are those your only questions, Chris?
Yeah, for this one, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'll uh we'll keep you on for a sec, but uh yeah, go ahead, counsel.
Chris, um so lots four and five are to be dedicated. To the city of Jersey City. There would be no private development on those two lots. The floor area that is permitted from those two lots would then be moved over to lot one and two. Which on the tax map was east of Water Street. And and the development rights would go there. So um. Lot four and five would be dedicated to the city. The improvements that. Were referenced in the presentation would be improvements that would facilitate and further the widening of Route 440. And in the interim, in concert with the city planning department, uh the developer is willing to. Make certain improvements to Water Street and put some parking on Water Street. Really as temporary improvements that would serve the community until the Route 440 widening is done. And Ed, have I answered that question properly?
Yeah, I think what you I think the misunderstanding might have been the use of the word improvements. We're talking about improvements. We're talking about. Street trees, street lighting, curbing, paving, sidewalks, that kind of thing. Those are the only improvements. Parking.
So you're saying after um after all this is done, Water Street is still going to exist. It's just going to have the improvements on it. And and so um I guess the last question, so the farmer's market and then. That's going to be purchased by the developer?
Yes.
Okay, and then that whole land is going to be stripped clean and just waiting for the city to use it to widen uh 440?
Yes, the the applicant will demolish the existing improvements on on those lots, yes.
Okay, and there's nothing going to be built on that um land. Um at all, just going to be curb cuts and just things to beautify that particular stretch of land?
Yes.
Okay.
And counsel, through the record, currently under the plan, those lots four and fives could be developed. And built upon today as it as it sits under the.
Yes, yes, counsel, they could. Yes.
Right.
And that's where it comes an issue with Route 440 expansion. And then being fully within the widening uh of the area of the the road. Fully within the setback line. So. This is a this is a mechanism for relieving that issue. There are others along this corridor. Uh but none quite as significant or exacerbated by the setback line as these two sites.
Okay, thanks, guys. Chris, anything else?
Sorry, I just demoted him.
Okay, um all right, anybody else from public? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hands.
Saying no more public, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Um. Matt, I know you've commented already. Do you have anything else to add?
That recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tram, I'd like to make a motion to accept and approve the review and discussion of amendments to the Water Street redevelopment plan regarding the split zone sites. Route 440 widening, Water Street improvement and transfer of the floor area. And forward to city council with a favorable recommendation for formal adoption.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for. Approval.
A motion to approve Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Karen Langston.
Yeah, um this is a big part of that puzzle. Uh this is this is really important, guys. I'm an I.
Motion carries on favor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Uh all right, let's move on to the review and discussion of amendments to the Exchange Place North redevelopment plan. Regarding the addition of research, testing, laboratory uses. Uh this is petitioned by. Cali Harbor Side Associates LP. Formal action may be taken.
I am looking for. Chuck Harrington, but I do not see him.
There it is.
I'm promoting him.
I was looking for Charles, actually, so Chuck, I have to. I refer to you as Chuck, but I was looking for Charles, so. You have the floor, Charles.
There we go. Sorry, if you could promote Tom Golden as well, he's a representative from uh Matt Cali entities.
Just promoted.
Okay, so um yeah, for the record, um Charles Harrington, Kamal Foley, on behalf of the applicant here. What uh the the board or some of the board members may recall that we were before uh the the planning board. Probably about two years ago, um a year and a half to two years ago, we actually had a meeting down at the uh planning. Uh office uh in that that room right outside their their offices and. We had proposed a similar, actually the same um amendment at that time. Uh for the Colgate redevelopment plan uh to permit uh this type of use, uh and we're specifically looking at ninety-five Green Street. Uh because a new owner was coming in and they wanted to really explore the life sciences uh uses. Uh in Jersey City and and in this metropolitan area. So what we're proposing tonight is to extend the same the same use, same language. To be permitted in the Exchange Place North redevelopment plan. So if you're. You know, not familiar with that, or I know it was put in your materials, the this redevelopment plan uh runs from. Uh essentially, your your fifty, seventy, eighty, ninety Columbus uh projects there with the the Marriott. Uh up by Grosh- the Grosh Street Path Station at the corner of Columbus and Marin. And then it runs east uh towards uh along Columbus Drive all the way down to uh Exchange Place Path Station. And then you come into the Matt Cali Harbor Side uh complexes. So you got, you know, Plaza one, two, three, four, four A and five. Or uh you know, predominantly office, the office buildings. What Matt Cali has is is proposing um is to. Permit this use so that they can attract similar users. Uh I think this is a a use that that um. Is is something that will be in demand, especially in this area. And especially in light of uh, you know, today's environment where I think everybody's going to be relooking at at how much they use office space. And what they use it for. Uh these types of uses are are uses that you can't do at home, right? You need you need the space, you need um, you know, the adequate uh facilities and. I know specifically uh my client is looking at four A, Plaza four A has is already. Can probably accommodate these types of uses because they have higher ceilings, so it's particularly suited for it. Uh and then they see it maybe as an expansive use uh within the other the other complexes uh within the Harbor Side Plaza, so. Um yeah, that's 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 really, you know, the 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 crux of it. I mean, I can't, I also can represent, I did reach out to Councilman Solomon. Who was uh involved in in the first go-around with the Colgate redevelopment plan. Um and I sent him all the materials about three weeks ago and, you know, he just succinctly told me, hey, you know, thanks, thanks for the heads up. You know, um so he hasn't gotten back to me. I assume he's he's good. You know, with with this because we've we've flushed it out last time too and and obviously we'll we will uh if this is approved, we would uh. You know, have any further discussions with him at the council level. Um so I do have, um you know, Tom Golden is with me tonight. He he can answer any questions that the board may have, but it's it's really straightforward in that we're we're proposing it to be a permitted use in all the districts. So, you know, you'll you'll see, you know, most of the dis- not most, is the districts down on the waterfront, the the Matt Cali Harbor Side. Have a lot of office buildings already here. There are, there are still some opportunities to build additional office space. The properties that I mentioned earlier, fifty through ninety Columbus are already built out, the residential buildings. And and hotel buildings, so it really doesn't affect that that portion of the redevelopment plan. It's really as you. You head east and and you get into the Harbor Side Matt Cali complex.
Chairman, if I may, Mr. Harrington, the only question that I had, I I think it's pretty straightforward. It's. Making a use permitted within the plan. What does it do, if anything, regarding setbacks and bulk standards and and things of that nature? This is going to be interior outfitting, it it seems like.
Yeah, I didn't know, this would not affect any any set existing setback or building requirements. It's just within the building that this use would be permitted.
Chairman, I think the definition is, you know, clear, so I I don't know how much more we need other than. Literally reading the definition that's being proposed for research slash test laboratory. And what that is, but I.
Yeah, I will um, I'll defer to the board. Uh I have no questions for Mr. Golden. I think it's very straightforward. I don't know if we need to call him, but uh let's ask if anybody has any questions. Commissioner, is anything? Any questions? Okay, um yeah, counsel, I think we're good. Mr. Golden, thank you for coming tonight. But uh I don't think we need any testimony.
Okay.
Okay, uh so at this time, I will open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, um I'm sorry, redevelopment plan change. Please raise your hand. If you are calling in and you'd like to comment. Please raise your hand. You can press star nine to raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, saying no public, I move to close the public portion.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. I don't know, this is Matt, is this yours or Erica?
It's mine, I'm sorry. So I'll just uh I'll just interject. Um so good reason why redevelopment is such a flexible tool. Uh uses are living and breathing things that we need to. Instead of from time to time, uh staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tram, I'd like to make a motion to accept and approve the review and discussion of amendments to uh to the Exchange Place North redevelopment plan. Regarding the addition of research, testing, laboratory uses. And forward to city council with a favorable recommendation for formal adoption.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
On a motion to recommend to counsel, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Uh yeah, I agree with Matt's assessment. Um this is essentially why we have redevelopment plans, so uh you know, we can change with the times. And I think this is, like Mr. Harrington said, uh a use that you can't do from home. I know everybody's. Not everybody, I'm not, but a lot of people are working from home now and uh. Yeah, this is one that you have to physically be there for, so uh this is a change for the positive, so I'm gonna vote aye.
Motion carries on favor.
Okay, thank you. Uh all right, let's move on to the re item nineteen, review and discussion of amendments to the block. Uh one, three, one, zero, two redevelopment plan regarding provisions of affordable housing. Uh the amendments were petitioned by PH Urban Renewal LLC. Care of the Matt Cali Corporation. Uh formal action may be taken.
I'm gonna be presenting it, Ashley from Scrinsey Hall and Beck. Don's tied up, so just wanted to let you know. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioner.
Books behind you there.
Yeah, law library. Ashley Bryn from Scrinsey Hall and Beck, on behalf of the applicant, um we are building a project located at twenty-five Christopher Columbus Drive. Which is part of the block thirteen, one oh two redevelopment plan. As part of this approval, we have an obligation to deliver thirty-five affordable housing units that would remain affordable for twenty years. We are here this evening to ask for an amendment to that plan that would allow us to provide those affordable units off-site. At a Matt Cali-owned building on Washington Street known as Monaco. Instead of providing those units in a year and a half, we are proposing to provide forty units right away in the Monaco building. The units will be initially fully furnished and available right away. Forty units will be provided instead of thirty-five, and they will be affordable for thirty years instead of twenty. We are looking for a favorable recommendation. Uh and with respect to this application, we have had discussions with planning staff as well as met with Councilman Solomon and his board, the project is located. And that's it.
That's uh that's the entire presentation.
Um I think Don might be joining in, just one moment.
So the board is aware of the location if the if it wasn't clear. The application uh that came before the planning board on a couple of occasions is located at twenty-five Christopher Columbus. Of Washington, Christopher Columbus and Warren, and actually extends from one street to the the other. And it is under construction at the moment here on that area. On have further comments that he wanted to provide if if he's here, I just wanted to some time or otherwise. The amendment language was uh pushed to the data portal as well as their cover letter. If there's any questions, I may be able to answer them or Ash.
Okay, um I I mean, my main question is why? You know, we we obviously. Have this written into the redevelopment plan specifically for that site. Uh why are we moving up?
Actually, I think that's an answer, better answer for you.
Actually, it's a win-win for both parties. The city gets uh more affordable units for a longer period of time. And we get to put those units in a very close by lower, lower-cost buildings since it's already been built.
So just for the record, um that obviously. Was Don Pepe, correct?
Oh, I'm I'm sorry.
Yes.
I didn't know I could get hurt.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, was that the answer to the question, Tom?
Yeah, yes, it is. Uh the the building at uh the Monaco building is obviously completely depreciated at this point, so. And it was built at a lower square foot construction value. So for Matt Cali, it presents a win because. You know, it 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 it's it's at a lower cost. And for the city, it's five additional units, ten additional years. Furnish units and they're available much sooner. Uh we saw this as a win-win and we presented it that way.
Okay, so if if we are talking about moving them to the Monaco. Why isn't that site singled out in the redevelopment plan?
Because the the redevelopment plan that needs to be amended is the one where twenty-five Columbus is to shift it. We're gonna have to go and enter into an affordable housing agreement with city council. We're gonna have to amend our redevelopment agreement with the JCRA. There's still a lot of steps that need to happen. But one of them is not to amend the redevelopment plan where the Monaco is. There's nothing that presents prevents us from receiving the units there.
So again, Don, um. You know, obviously, yeah, there's a lot of moving parts to this, to to move those units, but again. You know, I don't, it it's it's worded a little cloudy in the redevelopment plan change. It's just worded as, you know, within Wardee, east of Marin Boulevard. So as far as the language in the plan goes, it's a little loose, you know, those those units. It's a little loose, you know, those, those units could go anywhere.
Chairman, it does have to be within one mile according to the proposed language, right? It's within one mile of lot. One point oh two and within Ward E and east of Maron Boulevard. But to the chair's point, obviously, the board, if it were to make a recommendation. To the council, it could be to qualify it, and quite frankly, Mr. Pepe. I I think that it would be acceptable to put it in this plan if it was to be. Provided or looking to be provided in a specific location. I don't know if you'd have to amend the other plan to receive it if. Your position is that building could receive the units, whatever that building is.
Castle, if it were the board's desire to do so, if they were to recommend, if they were to see clear to recommend this. With the addition of language that the units be placed in the Monaco building, I actually, I did not craft this amendment language. I I did review it and edit it. That is our intention and we would stand by it.
So again, Mr. Chairman, I just point out to the board that obviously the board's purview includes adding or subtracting. Language in their recommendation to the mayor and council. And chairman is, as you're well aware, mayor and council can adopt it, ignore it. Do whatever it wants, so.
Obviously, um. Yeah, I, I'm not comfortable with this without that language in there that they, it would go specifically to the Monaco. Obviously, we won't call it the Monaco, we'll, we'll list a block and lot number. But I I'm not happy with that language that. You know, just reads within one mile. Within Ward E, east of Maron Boulevard. My other. Issue with this. I I don't know if this is the appropriate time to bring it up, but um. You know, I understand there's more units being added than were. Uh, counted in twenty-five Columbus. You know. I think the Monaco is less than one mile if I'm correct. From. From twenty-five Columbus. But, you know, I think the intent of having those units. In twenty-five Columbus, a lot of those units are gonna go to families. I know, you know, I see the breakdown of the units that it's eight studios. Twenty-two one bedrooms, uh, no less than ten two bedrooms. You know, those are a number of units where we can prevent. Children from walking to their new school, which is gonna be housed in twenty-five Columbus. Uh, so that's, you know, that's one of my other problems with having them moved offsite. And I do see somebody with their hand raised right now. We will, we'll open up public comment a little bit. Uh, and we'll hear everybody. But um. You know.
Before we leave that thought, um, specifying the block and lot. I just, uh, want to perhaps also, if that is the wish of the board. Uh, as this progresses here tonight, I don't want to amend the language. Or I would caution you to not amend the language to conclude. As Don stated, there's a lot of other holes in the air that are grimace that need to change. Staying on site, and I don't believe the language necessarily concludes. From staying on site. But if we, that's, that's why I'm not sure. I can. Elaborate on that beyond that point, but that was just be my. Word of caution.
For, for the record, we did provide the specific units to. Uh, Councilman Solomon and the planning staff, when we had these discussions and the JCRAs attorneys. So it was specific units photographs. So I don't, I don't think that there's a potential that we could slip these in somewhere else. Because the city council simply wouldn't, I I would imagine would not accept.
Well. I I just, I think the, the language that's in the plan and and I I agree with Matt that it, you know, I don't wanna. You know, yeah, it does specifically move them to the Monaco if we write that language in there and they still could stay at twenty-five Columbus. I I'm just, I'm not comfortable with the vagueness of that language that, um. You know, I know we're talking about the Monaco. I know when this is presented to city council. It'll be discussed that they're going to the Monaco, but with all the moving parts in. Securing those units through the JCRRA and all that. It it's still up in the air, you know, the, the language being the language that we're looking at right now on screen. It it doesn't specify anything. And, um. You know, forgive me for being glass half empty. I I just, I I don't know that I'm comfortable with a, a. A broad stroke like that, that, um, it's within one mile and east of Maron Boulevard in Ward E. So, you know, those are my concerns. Besides. Others that I I just, I'm not comfortable really setting precedent to move affordable housing offsite. When it's been written into the plan specifically. But, you know. That's just me, so I will, uh. If, uh, Don, if you don't have anything else, I'll open it up to the board for questions.
Now, I I would just add, uh, Chairman, I I could see how something like this. Could be fodder for abuse, but if anybody's familiar with the Monaco building, it's class A building, Matt Calley just spent. In excess of, I believe, eight million dollars renovating the building. It is, it is, you know, as, as equal to, if not superior to. Uh, twenty-five Columbus, with the exception of the issue that you raised regarding the school, but remember, that's a very low level grade school. So I think that, uh, you know, the, the, the opportunity to affect a number of children. Would be somewhat limited by that fact, you know, it's, it's not like a K through twelve. I think it's K through three.
Sure. But, you know, those are specifically the kids I don't want walking down Washington Boulevard to school. It it's just, uh. I I feel like we're, we're picking behind what's, or or we're picking what's behind door number one. For what we have currently. And, um, you know, that's just my take. I I'll open it up to the board for any questions. If anybody has any questions, comments, anything?
I have a question.
Uh, go ahead, Jeffrey.
Okay. So, if I understand right, the plan is to move. The kid, well, not the kids, the, um, the tenants from. One building to the Monaco, which, what school would they go to if they were moved to the Monaco? Does anybody know?
It's a good question.
I I do not know, uh, I do not know, Commissioner.
Okay.
Sometimes house school or city up the lines can be confusing at best. I don't think that's even been determined yet. Where, where? I I would venture to.
Okay.
That that it may well be there because it is relatively close. I think it would be the closest school.
Okay, so we're, we're talking roughly maybe forty kids. If they're of that age from, um. Kindergarten to fifth grade, you said, or third grade?
For third grade, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else, that was it.
Certainly is a valid one, and it would be very convenient to be able to attend a school in your same building. I don't think parents of children of that age allow their children to go walk on Washington Boulevard by themselves. I think they can walk to school.
I I would hope not, but. No, you never know. All right, anybody else? Any questions, commissioners?
Commissioner, a quick question.
Sure.
I don't think I was here when they did the, uh, when they had twenty-five Washington, but I have read up someone on it. Would there be any restriction to amenities? Are there different and recent amenities between the two buildings? What kind of differs between the residents' access to the things in the building between the two?
There. I I don't know that I have the answer to that. They are both highly amenitized buildings, roughly equivalent. I mean, there are gyms, there are meeting areas in both buildings. I don't know if there's a separate charge, nor do I think that we can charge a separate charge to affordable tenants. But that would be the same with either building. I I I don't believe that we can, but I don't know for certain. They would have access to every amenity that every other unit owner.
Um, Commissioner, Commissioner Allen. I just, I, I wanted to follow up with you, so the Monaco is actually.
I don't think we've sworn you tonight.
My license is current.
Let me just swear, do you swear any testimony you give tonight is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
We do.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up, so, um, the Monaco is district, uh, first, uh, zone for school thirty-seven Cordero in Hamilton Park. And, um, twenty-five Columbus is actually supposed to be an annex. Uh, for sixteen to take their early ed. Now, when the schools come in, I don't know if they would be doing a redistricting. But I I I just wanted to, I do, I did know the answer, so I just wanted to follow up.
Okay, Cordero is on, um.
Okay, thank you.
Hamilton.
Yeah, Cordero was on Erie and Hamilton Park.
Yeah, yeah.
Which actually brings up, um, that doesn't bring it up, but something else, uh, that was just mentioned. Uh, going back to Commissioner Allen's, uh, testimony and question.
Downtown will have to redistrict, especially with the school that you guys just, um, approved recently also.
Sure. So counsel, one thing, when, whenever we talk about affordable housing in a, a site plan review. Um, we do talk about the materials being the same as the other units. Uh, and and the such. Um, so you're, you testified that, you know, the building amenities would all be open to. The affordable units as well, um. You know, you did mention that there were renovations that happened at the Monaco. I- is there any difference in the units? That would be marked for affordable housing in the Monaco versus the units that are market rate in the, in the Monaco?
So, uh, obviously, there's, these are already constructed and we had provided photos. These were FYI, uh, these were Airbnb units. They were all rented out by corporate tenant. As Airbnb units until the city adopted an ordinance that prohibited that. That's why this block of units became available in the Monaco. I I do not have a side-by-side comparison, but they were not constructed to be. Uh, uh, of a lesser, uh, finish.
Sure. But you, you test.
Televisions, beds, you know, kitchens, kitchenettes, dining, uh, cups, plates, saucers, pots, pans, oven. Toaster ovens, microwave ovens.
But you testified that, that the Monaco had just undergone renovations.
It has, yes.
So were these units renovated as well?
I do not believe they were.
Okay, so we could possibly be dealing with. You know, a difference in unit materials and countertop materials and and cabinetry and. You know, things like that. Th- this is something we, we generally. Want consistent between the, the market rate and the affordable units. That's why I ask.
It's absolutely the case, and if you were to make that recommendation, I could confirm it.
Okay, um, anybody else?
Generally believe that they weren't, that they are of equal quality to all of the existing units.
Okay.
Was a corporate, a corporate tenant of sixty units has an incredible amount of power. I don't think that they would allow them. To fall into disrepair.
Believe me, I'm not suggesting that they're in disrepair, or, um, I'm sure they're fully functional. Do we have any idea on the, the size of the units compared to what? What the units were gonna be in twenty-five Columbus? I know, you know, we do have a breakdown on. On the bedroom side, you know, eight studios, twenty-two one bedrooms and no less than ten two bedrooms. But are they similarly sized units that were gonna be in twenty-five Columbus?
My recollection, uh, Mr. Chairman, is they're larger. If it, if it was an older building, the newer designs call for smaller units.
Okay, interesting. All right, uh.
Chairman, I just wanted to add, I think it was testified to, and it just came to the attention of staff. It'd also be entering into a affordable housing agreement, but language proposed on the screen and in their amendment here. Doesn't explicitly state that, so the board may want to consider adding that in. Forward the end, uh, where it references a redevelopment agreement. Uh, or in a standalone sentence.
Uh, I'm sorry, Matt, could you just repeat?
Affordable housing agreement. I know that, Don, you stated that we would be entering into one. But if the board felt more comfortable, you know, listed about that language, that board may want to consider adding that sentence into the amendment.
Think that makes sense and that could address some of the board's concerns that the language is slippery. That we have to enter into as part of the rights to do this offsite transfer, enter into an affordable housing agreement. To the satisfaction of planning staff and, uh, Jersey City Council.
Okay. All right, so if there's no other questions, um.
Chairman, if I may, I just. Is there a? Unit breakdown requirement existing, Mr. Pepe? I understand that we're talking about in the amendment.
There were by bedroom, and to be candid with you, we do not have any, we had to provide one three-bedroom unit. In twenty-five Columbus that we are unable to provide in the Monaco because we do not have a three-bedroom unit. But we did not replace that three-bedroom with one two. We, we made sure that we added two twos. To make up for the one break.
But otherwise, the breakdown is similar as far as what's here, because I don't see that as being. Changed or stricken, right? It looks to me like we're adding a breakdown of, of bedroom makeup. In the amendment. Is it somewhere else in the redevelopment plan that says? The way I read the existing affordable language, it's just a minimum of five percent. Shall be dedicated as moderate affordable housing for a period of twenty years.
It's a color requirement that dictates the, uh. That the unit base.
Okay, um, Matt, do you have anything you want to add before we open up public?
One, one more question, Chairman.
I'm sorry, who was it? I didn't see any.
Commissioner Horton.
Oh, there it is. Okay, go ahead, Peter.
Uh, is there any kind of following up on, uh. Mr. Santos', uh, questions? Is there any position that the units would have to be located at twenty-four, twenty-five, uh. Christopher Street versus the one in the Monica building? For instance, are they, you know, ones on the ground floor, whereas one would be higher up in the building, and are ones located with a view, and the other doesn't have a view, or something along those lines?
We, we weren't restricted in either instance. Color requirements don't tell you where the units need to be. But there is a, it is mixed throughout the building in, in what we're proposing in the Monaco. I did not take part in the application for twenty-five Columbus, so I don't know exactly what the mix, where, where they were located. But I can tell you, they are not isolated in any specific section. But I can tell you, they are not isolated in any specific section. They are spread throughout the building, which again was in keeping with the Airbnb practice.
Yeah, I just wanna make, you kind of threw me when you said they're all owned and located in the same area on the Monica Building. I just wanna make sure it wasn't like some, oh, no exception offer or something.
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't have a four hall. That's, uh, the, definitely not.
Okay, um, anybody else? And Matt, I didn't hear an answer from you. Do you want to add anything before we open up public?
No, this time, no.
Okay, alright, thank you. Uh, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. Uh, if you want to comment on the redevelopment plan change, please raise your hand. If you are calling in. Uh, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
I'm promoting Chris Jackson.
Hello?
We got you, Chris. And uh, just for the record, uh, Chris has already been sworn in tonight. Uh, you are still under oath, Chris, if you wish to be. And we have five minutes for you.
I'm sorry, I got my little cell phone. Yeah, um, I remember this project explicitly uh, well, because I was on the council. Um, and at that time, it was one of the seventieth, um, seventy uh, tax abatements that the full-up administration had basically. Uh, pushed through, and I remember the night clearly. Uh, this project um, is. Is one of the last long-term tax abatements from the full-up administration. It also uh, has a project labor agreement attached to it. Originally, the project went up from twenty-three to sixty stories. It has a million dollars and city issued bonds. And this project uh, with the tax abatement saved the developer like seventy-one million dollars over the last. Well, over the course of twenty-five years, right? And so we were thankful for the public school, you know, me being the educator. And we hope that the school really serves the population um, of the Jersey City Public School District. Um, but we, I, I just thought that I was gonna get a more detailed explanation of why. The uh, affordable housing was moved from the site. Uh, the project was given a long-term tax abatement because the mayor developed a tier system for awarding abatements. And this project was located in the mayor's first tier, which said that it, it would give a ten-year tax break. If the uh, project had mixed income, um, housing, uh, mixed income incorporated in it. And so that's why it was twenty-five uh, years, because of the school, because of all the uh, agreements with the JCRRA. It was also um, a connection with one hundred Montgomery, which a hundred and something units. Their affordability was to be preserved for uh, about twenty years. So I thought when this project, uh, when I heard about this project that um, the five. The five percent increase, because it's not thirty-five, because what we were voting on back that time was thirty-seven. Parcels of housing, uh, affordable housing. Um, so that was also with a hundred. Uh, Montgomery, which was to preserve that housing for a number of years. And so. Um, I'm thankful that you did increase the affordable housing units, but I think that it should stay on-site. Um, i- i- it's very appreciative, because you know, Jersey City is very much uh, you know, you know, cost burden. But I really don't see the need in moving affordable housing offsite when you already worked with the city. And the JCRRA and everyone else, and there's mutual benefits on both sides. Um, I don't want to tell you what to do with taxpayer money, but with over seven hundred and fifty uh, units of housing. You can keep the increase of three units of affordable housing at that site. While extending the affordability, um, you know, for thirty years, also at the site at one hundred Montgomery. And um, I found it kind of disrespectful that this was secondhand Airbnb housing that we're talking about. We're not talking about that, that new quality housing that's being built at twenty-five Columbus. Um, I do not know the specifics um, around, you know, the types of. Uh, you know, the housing units that's gonna be provided in that new um, dwelling, the Monaco. Uh, that you are proposing, and you early, and the lawyer actually said earlier in the um. A presentation that the units at the um. Monaco um, is cheaper. Of a cost, the units are cheaper than the actual units at twenty-five Columbus. And like uh, I guess Commissioner Langston, I just think that that uh, those folks need to stay. The housing need to stay uh, at twenty-five Columbus, and, and if you want to do Jersey City a favor. Uh, we'll take the forty uh, units of affordable housing inside of twenty-five Columbus. And preserve the housing uh, for thirty years at both sites, twenty-five and at one hundred Montgomery. Uh, thank you.
Alright, thanks, Chris. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman, and, and we would have to, I think, demonstrate to you that the units are of equal quality. When we go before the city council, because remember, this is just a recommendation from the planning board. These conversations will be held at the city council level, and I'm grateful that I'm aware of some of the concerns. Uh, when I said, just to correct the statement, when I said that they were cheaper, they are not cheaper units. I just mean that when the Monaco was constructed, it was constructed at a lower per square foot construction cost. Which is why this is an attractive move to my client. And I don't think, you know, I mean, we are offering these additional units and this additional time. And don't forget, the units will be available up to eighteen months sooner, because this building is ready for occupancy right now. At a time when, when housing is, is most direly needed because of COVID. Um, so it wasn't that the units were cheaper. In fact, just the opposite, they are larger. It is that it costs less to construct that building than it costs to construct a new building.
But I also don't want to uh, forget about the um, additional um, agreements that were made. Along with, you know, with the JCRRA at that time, in trying to preserve the affordability in the housing. And if you are going to propose that affordability is extended at one site, the affordability has to be extended. At the other site also. That, that, you, you, because you can't forget one hundred Montgomery. Because that was a part of the deal also, because there's two parcels, there's two buildings, whatever, that I think um. There's two uh, development uh, groups, whatever, that own both properties.
Great counselor, and see, part of the problem is my client does not, I believe, own one hundred Montgomery. Those restrictions on affordability were put in place prior to my client's acquisition of twenty-five Columbus. So they don't control that. There, there would be no way to go back and, in, in my uh, in my understanding, to go back and. And, and affect any change to one hundred Montgomery, but those units have been preserved as was promised and as was proved.
But what I'm saying is like, the, the ordinance that was passed by council. Um, has one hundred Montgomery in it. It has uh, the affordability in it, it has the tax abatement um, in it for twenty-five years. Because that's the reason, the reason why you, you have the tax abatement is because you put affordable housing. Inside of twenty-five Columbus, and that gave you um, a longer tax abatement, because, because you did that. And then also, you know, along with the school and uh, you know, everything else. But I think that it, it's um, and then, you know, the savings of seventy-one million dollars over twenty-five years. That, of course, that's mutual benefit, whatever, because, you know, we get in a school and the city is also, you know, giving a million dollars in order to. Do a lot of infrastructure with sewer and everything else at the site. So that ordinance was all encompassing, along with the PLA, and I didn't even ask about, is, is anyone in compliance? Um, because that was one of the last PLAs that was actually uh, approved by the city. So that, so this ordinance is really multi-layered, and uh, just moving the houses from off that site. There's other dominos, or whatever, that will probably have to fall also along with that. Like, I just don't want this to just um. The, the, like, the other components not to be taken into consideration when uh, when uh, the planning board is voting tonight. That there's, there's a lot of moving parts with this.
Chris, we are uh, we're way over your five minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
That, that's okay. Um, I'll, I'll testify that the, the PLA is being honored. That uh, that is in effect. Um, a- as far as, you know, one hundred Montgomery goes. That, that would be more a city council issue than us. Um, th- those, you know, that language isn't in front of us tonight. But it's, it's certainly something city council can, you know, can speak to on what the, the original agreement was and what the original ordinance said. So um, yeah, we're just going on our language that's in our, our plan tonight. But.
Chairman, I do have to just advise the board, obviously, that, you know, the amendment is as, as presented. And the request is of the board to view the amendment. And to make a recommendation to the council, will ultimately take action or no action, whatever may happen. By the council. Uh, the only other thing that, that I would advise the board is. If the amendment is not acted upon favorably by the council, or not handled by the council when it gets there. The plan stays as is, how is, where is. So. I can't speak to what that means, but. You know, if, if nothing changes, nothing changes, and that's just how it progresses. So I, I just want the board to, to appreciate that, its deliberations.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Um, alright, let's move on with public comment.
I'm promoting Rafael.
Thank you.
Rafael, you can uh, unmute whenever.
Oh, sorry.
How's it going? Can you turn your video on?
Yes, sir.
You're muted again, sir. Mr. Wakefield?
Mr. Wakefield. Okay, we got you.
Alright, I just want to swear you in, okay? Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you just state and spell your name for me, please?
Yes, Rafael Wakefield, R A T H A E L. W A K E F I E L D.
Thank you.
Mr. Wakefield, good evening. We have five minutes for you.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I live in. I live two oh one Warren Street, couple blocks down the way. And I gotta say, I'm a little hurt by this. This is a great place for uh, single people like myself, for families. And I would be really pleased to know that we could have more people struggling with rent costs, living close by, not have this be such an exclusive neighborhood. So I have that in mind, regardless of the legality of the matter, regardless of whatever precedent may be set. I would urge the board to recommend against this amendment. I don't think it's appropriate. We should have integrated housing with the cost.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wakefield. We appreciate it. Okay, anybody else from public? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, say no more public. I move to close the public portion.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to close public. We are closed. Uh, Matt, do you have anything to add?
Go further, Colin.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to accept um, as presented today, the review and discussion of amendments to the block. One, three, one, zero, two redevelopment plan regarding provisions of affordable housing. Um, and uh, forward to city council with an unfavorable recommendation.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt with an unfavorable recommendation to city council.
So Chairman, I would just say that the recommendation to council, motion is to recommend that council not adopt. The amendment. As I understood, vice chair's motion.
That is correct. Uh.
Can we clarify what a yes vote is, um?
Counsel?
Uh, let's wait until we have a second. We don't have a second. Okay, we have a second.
So a, as I understand the motion, the motion is to not recommend the adoption. By the council, so a yes vote would be to not amend the redevelopment point.
That is correct.
Hey, uh, on a motion to not recommend uh, the amendments to the redevelopment plan.
Just before we call the roll, Vice Chair Gonzalez, only because of the procedure here. And the fact that this is going to be uh, sent over to the council for their. Review and action, is there anything in particular that you want the council to know? That we should be putting in our uh, report to the council regarding this, as far as. Thoughts that you may want them to, to consider?
I, I, counsel, I think we can just put that in our, you know, our comments when we vote, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Um, motion stands, and uh, let's say I'm gonna call Commissioner Gonzalez.
Uh, I will just say that I was very uncomfortable with the, with the language um, of, of the uh, the presentation. And I feel that uh, can, that our uh, planning board will be able to um, uh, allow or give better um. Better language that the city council may consider uh, at the time of, of their perusal. I'm gonna vote yes.
Uh, Commissioner Allen?
Uh, I, I can't in good faith relocate somebody, you know, ma- let's just say a single parent. With a three-year-old working full-time, who, you know. Doesn't have, you know, all the time in the world to. Drop the kid off to school and get to work on time when they have a obviously, obvious chance. To just walk downstairs and drop a kid off, go to work, you know, come back home to a decent building. I'm gonna vote aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Uh, my comments would be, I'm not comfortable in amending the redevelopment plan. I believe affordable units, it should be on-site and not off-site. My vote is a yes.
Commissioner Horton?
Uh, my vote is yes. I echo the comments regarding the language uh. And, you know, this is one of my concerns, where I don't know if the responses were adequate to dissuade me of any concerns that I expressed earlier.
Commissioner Langston?
Um, yeah, my concerns are, are certainly with the language that the. The site, it's not site-specific on where the units are being moved to. Um, and I, I also don't agree with moving those units off-site. Uh, A, I think it sets a bad precedent. B, I don't want to see. This move forward with, you know, with the Monaco being the go-to building downtown to move affordable units to. Um. You know, I'm not saying that it's, it's the applicant's intent, but. You know, that could turn into segregation really quickly. Um, so that, that's my concern. I, I'm just not comfortable moving the units off-site. Um. So I'm gonna vote yes.
Motion carries. All in favor, do not recommend the, or to, yes, to not recommend the option of these amendments. Was here tonight.
Thank you. Alright, let's move on, everybody. Um, I was instructed by Vice Chair Gonzalez. Uh, he is, he has to be off for another call at ten o'clock tonight. Uh, so. So we have an hour and fifteen minutes to conduct the rest of business tonight, uh, including memorialization. So uh. We'll try, we'll get as much as we can. So we lose our quorum at ten o'clock tonight. Uh, so with that said, let's call case P two zero dash zero eight four. Is a minor site plan for three eighty-three Palisade Avenue.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Counsel. Uh, wonderful, Stephen Joseph, the Toronto Law Firm for the applicant. Uh, this is three A three Palisade Avenue, mid block between Hudson and Franklin. This is in the R two D so R two D zone. Property is over five thousand square feet in floor area. We're here for minor site plan approval because of that. Um, we're proposing four stories, three units, that's a a density of fifty-two units an acre, where seventy seventy-two units an acre permitted. Uh, Jeff Lewis is going to be our architect this evening and let's uh. No variances are being requested. Let's get right into it to try and save some time.
Before we do that, this is a notice case. I received the notice. All does appear to be in order. So we can mark that as A one for the record. And Mister Lewis, knowing that there are no variances involved and it is a minor site plan only because of the size. Uh. I think you can quickly walk us through.
And just for the record, Mister Lewis has been sworn and qualified already tonight. And I also do wanna put on record, um, I do live on Hutton Street, but I am outside of the. Two hundred foot radius.
You're on mute, Jeff.
Now I'm good?
Good.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Uh, so. Get my screen up and I am on the uh title sheet right now. I'm gonna skip where we are, cuz Stephen covered that pretty well. I just wanna show this building here in the center is the building that is existing on the site. It's a three story building. Uh, that building will be removed and replaced with a new uh four story building. Uh, four story, three family building. Looking at the site plan, we are building on the front property line, on the side property line. Um, we have a. Three foot concrete walkway along the side, which has access to the backyard and also to the trash area. Things are actually a lot easier to show on the floor plan, so I'm gonna go there. Uh, and the only other thing I'd mention here is the front of the building is basically staying the same. We have a nice existing street tree that we're going to keep. Any sidewalk or curb that we do damage, obviously, we will fix and repair as as needed. Um, going to the floor plan, so I'm gonna start here at the first floor plan. And briefly, just very quickly, here's that three foot walkway I just mentioned, and then we have an inset here. Uh, off of that, and that's for uh trash recycling, and then also our meters, gas and electric meters. Uh, and then going back to the front, uh, how uh, street frontage is here on Palisade Ave. Uh, the door, the main entry door is at the bottom of the building. We come into this new lobby. Which uh accesses the sprinkler room. This is a fully sprinkled building, the stair going upstairs and the ground floor unit. Uh, this unit covers the entire first floor. It is a three bedroom, two and a half bath, one thousand five hundred and seventy-six square feet. Enter into a hallway with access to half bath, coat closet, front of the building, front of the unit is a open living kitchen dining area. To the back, there's a hallway uh with access to washer dryer, uh furnace. This is uh, there are no P T X in this building. This is a ducted uh heat and air conditioning in all of the units. Uh, and in the back here, we have three bedrooms, two bathrooms, uh, including at the very back and en suite uh bedroom with a walk-in closet, bathroom. And uh sliding doors that walk out to a new terrace in the back. This is a private terrace for the ground floor unit. Um, it is a total of one hundred and ninety-three square feet. It's enclosed, uh, the entire backyard, uh, starting at the building back here, around the back and then to our building, is enclosed with a six foot board on board fence. And then also in the backyard, besides the the uh patio area, we have a small lawn area. And a little section where we have the condenser for the first floor apartment. Looking at the second floor, uh, what we're doing is we're doing split duplexes, uh, starting here. Uh, front and back, so there's one unit in the front, one unit in the back, and they're basically mirroring each other with small minor differences. Uh, the front unit, which is uh the unit two, is one thousand six hundred and fifty square feet, and unit three in the back is a little smaller, one thousand six hundred and thirty-six. Square feet. Both of them are four bedroom, three and a half bath units. Uh, just starting at the front one, you walk into this hallway with access to washer dryer, half bath and utility rooms. And then an open living dining kitchen area and a staircase which goes up to the next floor. It's the same in the back unit. The only difference is between the front and the back unit, the front unit has a Juliet balcony off of the living area on the bottom. And then towards the back, uh, there's a twenty foot section of the first floor roof that we're using as a roof deck for the back unit. Ten feet if it will be roof, ten feet if it will be a roof garden. Going up to the second floor, again, these units are split down the middle. In the front, uh, we have three bedrooms, two bathrooms, including en suite. Uh, master bed with walk-in closet and uh private bathroom. And the only difference between these units is again on the back where we have a balcony off of the uh rear main bedroom. Then we actually have a mezzanine on the third floor. This is one master bedroom suite, walk-in closet, private bathroom. And then sliding doors which go out to a private roof deck. Uh, the front roof deck is a little bigger than the back one. The front one. Uh, is three hundred eleven square feet. The rear one is two hundred and eighty-nine square feet. Uh, and then looking to the roof roof on top of the mezzanine, we have our four condensers, which are all for the uh the two upper units. And then coming to the elevations, we're doing a more modern building frontage here. And just to summarize the materials that we're looking at. Uh, the main body of the building at the bottom is a uh smooth brick, red brown in color. Uh, up above, we have cement panels in two different colors. Uh, the lighter one is a light gray color, and then the darker one, obviously, is a very dark gray color. Uh, all of the windows and doors on the front and the back are black aluminum frame windows and doors. Uh, and then the siding, which you have up at the top at the mezzanine level, and then on the back and the side, it's going to be a dark gray vinyl siding. And then just to briefly look at the side elevations, this is uh the right side, which is almost entirely against the existing building. Will be flashing and closing off the space where uh where it's uh adjacent to the building next to us. And wherever any of this that is actually exposed, we'll be doing a hard coat uh stucco finish painted this dark gray color. Then looking at the left side, which is set back and has windows on it. Uh, we are proposing first to um return the front finishes, the hardy panel finishes, about six feet, a little more. And then after that, it's gonna be that same gray vinyl siding in the back. And on the bottom, we have a uh ESIS base uh that's colored to match the color of the brick in the front. And actually, that is um, that's the presentation of the floor plans of this building. Again, we don't need any variances. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, only thing uh I'd like to add to that is a small correction. The building is and has been demolished. Um, that's reflected on the city's current.
Okay, thanks. Um, yeah, Mister Lewis, I have no questions. Anybody else? Okay, counsel, anything else from you?
I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so at this time, we'll open it up for a public comment. If anyone wants to comment, please raise your hands. If you're calling in, press star nine, please, to raise your hand.
Mister Chair, saying no public, then move to close the public portion.
Motion made and seconded, public is closed. And um Mallory, you have anything to to add?
Um, no comments. This is an as of right proposal, conforms with R two D. I did share um standard conditions of approval with uh Mister Joseph earlier today, so I just wanna confirm that he is comfortable with those.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, um, so that would just be the no materials or um anything shown in the plans can be changed without. Permission from um planning staff and the planning board. Um, the applicant shall provide an affidavit from Architect of Record that the construction project is. Consistent with approvals and all street trees and landscaping shall be installed in accordance with the forestry standards. Um, other than that, staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Mallory.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero, guys, zero eight four is presented to the board here tonight.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay, Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Hi.
Commissioner Allen.
Hi.
Commissioner Horton.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi.
Okay, motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everyone.
That building looks familiar, by the way. Okay, uh, before we go on, um, Mike, are you okay, or do you wanna break?
Can we do like two minutes, please?
We can do five minutes. We'll come back.
I'll even do four if we come back at nine.
Okay, we'll come back at nine o'clock, everybody. And once again, uh, we only have uh Vice Chair Gonzalez until ten o'clock. And that includes uh any board business we have tonight, including resolutions, so. Uh, we need to be wrapped up and done by ten o'clock tonight. We lose our quorum. Okay, thanks. We'll see you at nine. Okay, Mike, do we have you back? All right. All right, let's come to order again, everybody. Uh, and we will call uh item twenty-one is case P two zero dash one zero seven. Uh, for eight sixty-six Newark Avenue.
Yes, good evening, Chairman Langston, uh, Commissioners of the uh of the Planning Board. My name is Benjamin Wine, Attorney for the applicant, A B Cruise Construction Co, Inc. The property in question is located at eight sixty-six Newark Avenue. That's block seven eight zero six, lot twenty-three, and it is in the N C neighborhood commercial zone. The property in question is a corner property located at the northeast corner of Newark Avenue and Senate Place across from the railroad, which you will see in further detail. This lot is kind of unique in that it serves as a transition um within this small section of the N C zone uh between the industrial properties to the west. The uh almost exclusively residential, larger developments to the north and the uh and the true mixed use neighborhood commercial. Uh, developments to the east, and then like I like I indicated, the railroad across the street to the south. The applicant is here tonight seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to adaptively reuse an existing single story. Rundown auto body shop and uh and you'll hear uh specific testimony as to how that will look. And to construct four additional stories atop that building to consist of residential use. So the specific development will be four stories of uh. Of eight residential dwelling units over a ground floor, adaptively reused commercial space and uh and accessory parking for the residential. Um, we do have a few bulk variances associated with the application. I'll I'll quickly just identify what those are. It's a rear yard setback requirement uh of fifteen feet where the existing building is at zero feet, and we're proposing for the new portion to be set back four and a half feet. We do have an existing curb cut, which is not permitted. We are proposing to modify it, reduce it significantly. But uh but to keep it and and make use of uh of the curb cut, we're also proposing a or seeking a variance. For rooftop appurtenance coverage of twenty-seven point seven three percent, where twenty percent is permitted. And finally, the rooftop appurtenance setback of uh five point five feet from Senate Place where nine point seven five feet are required. My witnesses with me tonight are the project architect, Mukti Bajaj, as well as the project planner, Ed Colling. So unless you have any particular questions of me, Mister Chairman, I would uh move to have Mukti Bajaj added and allowed to share her screen.
Sure, and uh, once again, for the record, Miss Bajaj has been sworn and qualified. She is still under oath.
Thank you.
Chairman, for the record, this is a notice case. I am in receipt of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application this evening. All does appear to be in order, so we can mark that as A one for the record.
Thank you. Thank you. So uh so Mukti, why don't you share your screen and uh and we'll orient, uh, we'll walk the boot, the board through the uh the existing conditions of the site. As well as what we are proposing as a site plan.
Yeah, sure. Just want to show this, just to start, I just want to show this existing structure. Which is, this property is a corner of Senate Place and Newark Avenue, and this is existing auto body shop with the garage entrance at the back. This is another shot from on Newark Avenue. Um, so this is the existing one story structure. This is eight sixty-six Newark Avenue. The block is seven eight zero six and the lot is twenty-three. Um, this is in the corner lot on Senate Place and Newark Avenue. Um, there are two curbs on this property, one on the Senate Place, which is fifteen feet, six inches, and uh one another. Second curb cut or the depressed curb is on the Newark Avenue, which is ten feet. Um, at this point, uh, we, I mean, we are proposing uh four stories on top of existing one story masonry. Uh, the upper floors will be eight units. Um. And uh, and we are requesting couple of variances. This is undersized lot. So the lot depth is eighty-five feet, whereas normal or the standard required is hundred feet. Uh, but with the lot width is a little over, the required is twenty-five and near thirty feet width. Um, so the lot area is two thousand six hundred and ten square feet. So this particular property is in N C zone where uh we do comply with most of the bulk requirements. Uh, the only variances we are requesting for the upper floor for the rear yard variance. Uh, which is required is fifteen, and we are proposing four feet, six inches. Um, also, once you look at the plans, you, you know, even though we are requesting a mechanical and uh roof bulkhead variance, but if you look at the plans, this is the minimum. What we have provided. Um. And just go over the plans again. And the lot coverage and the building coverage is hundred percent. That is because of the existing structure. Which covers up the hundred percent of the lot. So the first floor square foot area is uh. Two thousand six hundred and ten. And second floor to fourth floor is. And second floor to fourth floor is same as two thousand three hundred and eighty-six square feet.
And Mukti can, that that's just because of the the slight reduction in depth of the building, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So if you'd like to go to the existing conditions and the site plan and just walk the board through before we get to the building itself, what proposed, what we're proposing to do to the the site and around the site?
So this is the existing structure. There's a survey that shows the existing one-story masonry structure. There's one um curb cut, which is on the Senate Place towards the north of the property. And the second one is on the Newark Avenue towards the east of the property. Um. So uh, and this is the demolition plan where we are keeping the structure, only the sidewalk sidewalk and curb cut will be redone. Just zoom the side plan.
There we go.
So on the upper floors, we are like, there are windows on the existing section towards the right, uh, which is existing, looks like a very old masonry building. And we are having a setback from that particular building of three feet one. At the back, there's just open parking and that's why we could give a backyard variance of four feet six at the back. Um, also, the whole sidewalk will be redone. We are proposing three trees. Uh, and plus the curb cut, which is was fifteen feet six, we are reducing that to ten feet. Um, and we have differentiated the pavers for the driveway for the pedestments, so it's easy to identify, so that will have a different colored concrete paving. And the pavers will be around the tree as well.
Okay, great. And Mukti, what are we doing with the the two curb cuts just specifically?
So the front and Newark Avenue, we are eliminating that curb cut, so there will be no curb cut on Newark Avenue now. And on the Senate Place, the curb cut is reduced from fifteen feet six to ten feet.
Okay, great. And that was in conjunction with the with the staff planners recommendation as well that we reduce that to ten feet?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right. So I think we can move on to the the specific building itself.
Yeah. This is, this shows the existing building with partial demolition. So this is a Senate Place. We have a, you know, there's a huge parking at the back. And and some office space, which is at current point, this is not being used. And outside towards at the corner, there's a small cellar, which I've shown it here. And this access to the cellar is only from the outside. So that will, that is currently just has some oil tank or some machine there. But it's not been used, so it's basically vacant.
Okay, and to clarify, when you say demolition, it's just the interior that's being demolished?
Just interior frame partitions will be demolished. These store most of the malls. In fact, there are a lot of openings which are blocked. We'll try to open those up and create a more upgraded facade. This is a first floor plan where we have provided the main entrance on the Senate Place, which is exclusively for the units on the upper floor. And we're also proposing a small commercial in the corner of Senator and Newark Avenue, which is six hundred and forty-four square feet. Uh, towards the north of the property where we have existing curb cut, we'll have a garage entrance and we are just providing two parking spaces. Uh, also, this, one of them is obviously handicap parking space. There's an elevator in the building, so all apartments will be handicapped. Um, and at the back of this garage, we have a trash room and a bike parking and a storage space for the residential, you know, units.
Okay, and Mukti, just to confirm while you're on this sheet, the residential and the commercial entrances are completely separated, correct?
That's correct. So commercial entrances to on the Newark Avenue or residential on the Senate Place.
Okay, and that's and that cellar that that you mentioned before that's existing, what what would that be for?
So this cellar will be exclusively used for commercial space. We don't know what the end use of the commercial space will be. So if this cafe or depends on how much usage it has, but it's really basically storage or a garbage room for the commercial space, depends on the use.
Okay, but to clarify, it would be in that whatever the use ends up being, it would be permitted, or else we would have to go to the zoning board of adjustment, obviously.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. All right.
So these are the floor plans from second to fifth floor. All the plans are similar. Um, the reason I have two different plans is because of the profile of the building changes a little bit, but the. Um, so both the units on each floor are two bedroom, one and a half bath. And net area of these units is approximately eight hundred, eight hundred to eight hundred, uh, sorry, seven hundred to eight hundred and thirty-five square feet.
All right. And they're all the same layouts, correct?
All the same layouts with one and a half bath washer dryer, central like conditioning. Um, yeah.
All right. And just before we move on, one one other question, you might have mentioned this, and I apologize if you did, but all of this entire building, including each unit, are all ADA compliant and accessible.
That's correct. That's what is requirement of the code and all the units uh have are ADA compliant.
Okay, great. All right. So you can take us to the roof.
So this is the roof where we have provided a common rooftop deck as a recreation space for the residential units only. And plus, we have provided additional planter boxes on on the Senate Place and at the corner of Senate and Newark and towards the back as well. This rooftop deck also is recessed or set back uh from the front property or the front parapet. We'll have a railing at the back. Um, so as I mentioned before, there's a little excess of bulkyard, but coverage, which required is twenty percent, if we had twenty-seven percent. But that is, one of the reason is because the lot size is small and this is the minimum requirement in the building code with the two staircases. Because of the common rooftop deck, the elevator, elevator machine room and the compressors and a very small elevator lobby.
And to confirm, all of those mechanicals and the two means of stair egress and the elevator and the elevator lobby, they're all required components to to have an ADA compliant, and really a building code compliant roof deck area.
That's correct.
Okay.
So this, this particular, this is just a schema, like already basic elevation of the existing facade, which just shows some block windows, some portion is masonry. This is a garage entrance on Senate Place, and this is also some opening, which is not uh garage opening at this point, but there's a curb cut and there's an opening here on the Newark Avenue also. And so this particular building, like if you look on the photographs, there are multifamily or high-rise buildings, five or six-story buildings on all the sides. So this particular building is a seven stories, this is six stories, this can go lost at the back.
Okay, and while while you go back to, yeah, you can go back to the elevations, that's okay. And in your, in your opinion, I was, you you just went to the materials board, so I was just going to ask you to talk about the materials a little bit that you chose.
Yeah. So uh, so materials, what we have chosen here is a red brick and the gray panel system, so it is. Use of more both traditional and modern at the same time, and it is inconsistent with what is there in the neighboring building. So this building is all masonry. This one is masonry with a panel system, lighter tone of panel system. We have given a light, little darker tone. And first floor with the, you know, stone cladding. And this is a facade on the Senate Place with the main entrance to the building. Um, this is a garage entrance and the front commercial space.
And again, the materials are are the same materials that you showed.
Yeah, that's correct. So this is the back of the facade, um, which is which we have a setback of four feet, six inches. Um, again, this materials are similar in the sense of this is. This will be a vinyl siding, but the tone will be very similar to what we have used on the on the corner over here with the panel system. And this is a east elevation where we are adjacent to the other masonry structure, and we have a setback of three feet one from there, so we could provide some windows. Also, we have added, even though we have a set, um, sorry, the variance for the, for the bulkyard. But we have shown the sideline diagram to indicate that this particular bulkhead won't be visible from the from the other opposite side of the street.
And Mukti, to clarify, that's because we are requesting relief for our bulkhead setback of not being nine points, I believe it's nine point seven five feet, where we're at five point five feet. So this is to illustrate, if you could just repeat that, what this what this illustrates.
The same thing, like the bulkhead uh setback required is nine point five feet and we have six feet over here. Uh, so the sideline diagram is basically indicates that it's not visible from the corner of the street. So even though the street is fifteen feet wide, there's some railing here, so you know, obviously we had to put a figure there to indicate that this is not visible. Also, just want to point out that if you look at the roof plan, um, so we have enough setback from the Newark Avenue that is twenty-four feet. Is because the way we have planned this building only from the Senate Place, not just because the entrance is on Senate Place. You know, we have shown both the setbacks, that this is little less than nine feet.
Okay. And just to clarify, from Newark Avenue, we we do meet the setback and do not require?
Yeah, that's correct. So again, the same setback is required on Newark Avenue itself, which is nine feet, eight or ten inches, I believe. And we do compare, we have twenty-four feet from Newark Avenue.
Okay. And the only reason that we're required to set it back from Senate Place is because this is a corner lot and we are again on, it's just a second frontage. That's that's why we have that requirement.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay, that pretty much concludes my testimony. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, anybody, any questions? I don't have any, actually. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bajaj. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, would you like to open it to the public to Mukti before I proceed to Ed or I'll leave that up to you?
No, let's go to Ed and then uh if we need to bring anybody up, we'll bring him back up.
Okay, absolutely. All right, Mukti, thank you very much. All right. So Ed, are you available? You should be on.
Yes, I'm I'm on and I recognize that I have been sworn already and I'm still under oath.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Ed, just to clarify, in addition to obviously being part of the project team, you you did have a chance to to visit the site, correct? You are familiar with the site?
Yes, we had, actually, we had staff to visiting the site. We had some, we had some uh photos we do, we took from from the the street. And I've been able to review them as well.
Okay, thank you. So Ed, I I guess in the interest of of getting all of your testimony across, why don't you start by explaining what is there now complimentary to what Mukti testified to? What we're proposing? And then you can go through the the justifications for the the minor relief that we're seeking.
Right. I'll just hit that briefly, because I think that Mukti did a very good job of explaining it, but I just wanted to mention that what's there today, it's a. It's a pre-existing thirty-foot wide by eighty-seven-foot deep lot. It's at the corner of Senate and Newark Avenue. It's the western edge of the Newark Avenue in the neighborhood commercial district. And what's there today is an existing kind of heavy commercial industrial type of of use. It's a non-conforming use. It's a non-conforming building. It's not consistent with the intent of this of the zone plan. Um, and I think it's important to point that out because what is being proposed is exactly consistent with what the Neighborhood Commercial District is looking for. It's a very attractive building. It's mixed use residential and commercial on the ground floor. And I think that the design is very consistent with the with the surrounding area. It's a good blend of the red brick, which reflects some of the older industrial structures across Senate Place, but it also reflects some of the newer newer architecture that you see a little bit further to the north. And then there's a few newer buildings on Newark Avenue, a little bit to the east that have the similar types of materials. So I think it's a good blend, a good transition uh into Newark Avenue as you progress up to the Neighborhood Commercial District. Um, I also want to point out that the building immediately next door is an older industrial structure. It is a through lot that goes through from the Neighborhood Commercial to the R one district, and also it wraps around the back of the lot. So on the on the the eastern side, you have this two-story industrial structure. And behind it, you have a a separate lot, but it's owned by the same company that owns the industrial structure and it's used in conjunction with it. There's a ramp that goes down to the building immediately adjacent to the proposed structure. And then there's another ramp that goes up as a loading dock and is parking. So I think what you'll find is that that those, that property will probably be developed. Uh, consistent with the Neighborhood Commercial District. And so our proposed building and our existing lot is really remote from any R one uses that are on the other street uh behind us. Um, I'll just jump right into the variances now and the proofs. Uh, we have a rear yard variance of four and a half feet versus fifteen. That's partly a hardship. The lot is only eighty-five, eighty-seven feet deep, I believe it is. If this worked in conforming lot, we would be able to to meet the the rear setback. Uh, so we had that little bit of hardship, I would I would call it. But also, I think you could do this as a C two variance where the benefits would outweigh the the detriments significantly. You know, we have a building that's reduced, that's non-conforming, a structure that's non-conforming, and it's going to be replaced by something that really promotes the intent and purpose of the zone plan. And um, so I think you could look at it from the C two benefits that were the detriment argument as well. On the rooftop, there is the both the issue of the coverage and as well as the setbacks. The setback variance really is also could be looked at as a hardship because it is a corner lot. We comply with the setback requirement for the bulkheads from the front property line, but we have a secondary frontage. So that makes it more difficult to comply on that side, because the lot is thirty feet wide, but but you can't position the the bulkheads any further to the east than we already have. So there is a a practical difficulties in meeting the intent, in meeting their their strict enforcement of that requirement. Although I think we meet the intent because we have moved it as far to the east as we could. And as as the architect has pointed out, there with the being the parapet and how the building is designed, the bulkhead will be invisible, invisible from the street. The roof coverage is also a hardship in in that um, this is a lot that's conforming in terms of area, but it's still a relatively small property. So when you have to put up there the the bulkhead for the elevator, you need two means of egress for the fire safety standards. Um, and you need to have the uh, the lobby area for stepping off the elevator for protection from the the weather. And to make this site more ADA compliant, it's virtually impossible to meet the covered requirement. It's invisible from the street. I don't think it's going to have any any detriment to the public good or to general welfare. And I think the benefits really outweigh the detriments, as I was describing before. The last various to address is really the curb cut, and in this case, there are two curb cuts, one on Long Newark Avenue, which is specifically prohibited at any rate at this point in time. And that's going to be completely removed. There's going to be a tree put there instead, and that's going to be where the commercial uh space will be accessed from. And the space on Senate Place is really a secondary, uh, you know, secondary street, so I don't see there's any negative impact there. Uh, input into driveway cut in that location, but it already exists and it's being significantly reduced. Um, there will be an increase in in curb along there that'll help provide for more efficient curbside parking. So I think that's a benefit from that perspective. And the other thing is that although there are only two spaces and the requirement is that there be five for a curb cut. One of the spaces is going to be a handicap space. This building is completely handicapped, adaptable, ADA compliant. And therefore, if there is a handicapped individual, they will be able to use that space on a priority basis. And that that will free up, again, rather than having a handicap space being on a permit basis from the city, that can be in interior to the building. Providing more publicly accessible space that'll be open to the the general community and the and the neighbors. So I think that's a better approach to design and being able to provide that handicap space on site. So I I think that's, I think it's clear from how this building is being designed and how it's proposed, that the benefits will substantially outweigh the detriments. And replacing this non-conforming use and structure, no substantial detriment to the public good or general welfare. Uh, the building is, actually promotes the the intent and purpose of the NC zoning district. So I think that this, the variances can be granted either through the C one criteria because of the undersized lot in the corner location. Or through the C two criteria where the benefits substantially outweigh any detriment.
Thanks. And I just have two follow-up questions and 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 that's really it, but for the C two, which I know you're using, do you mind just touching on a couple of the specific purposes that you feel are advanced?
Yeah, I mean, in addition to the to promoting the intent and purpose of the zone plan, we looked at the. Yeah, I mean, in addition to the to promoting the intent and purpose of the zone plan, we looked at the purposes of the act. You know, to uh sub paragraph two A talks about encouraging municipal action to guide the appropriate use and development of of the property. So you know, clearly, since we're promoting the intent and purpose of the zone plan, uh we are guiding the appropriate use of the development. And and that in itself will promote the public health, safety and general welfare. The building is code compliant uh in that in the regard from ADA accessibility in terms of meeting all fire codes and all that. All those sort of codes and standards. So two A is certainly met. The building also promotes the establishment of appropriate population densities. The intent of the NC district is to have mixed uses and the current building doesn't have any any residential whatsoever. Um, this building will have a compliant residential land uses above the ground floor commercial. So that promotes a a um appropriate population density. The property provides sufficient spacing and appropriate location in some mixed use, commercial residential building in a zone that permits it. So that's clearly an appropriate location and the property does have sufficient space to accommodate the proposed uses. Um, I think from promoting a desirable visual environment, that that really means no explanation when you look at the before and after pictures, really. And also, I think in terms of sub paragraph two J, uh this this project promotes the conservation of energy resources. Um, simply by the fact that we're preserving the existing building, we're not going to be adding to any uh landfill issues. Um, it also prevents urban sprawl sprawl and degradation of the environment from improper use of the land. Clearly, this is a proper use of the land. Um, and therefore, I think that we meet numerous numerous purposes of the act as well.
Thank you. And Ed, last question for you as well, just taking a look at that radius map down on the bottom left corner that Mokti's got put up. Uh, just given the the intersection of the multiple zones, I I just, if you could put on the record, is is it your opinion as a planner that given the the mult? This this property's location relative to really all the all the colors that are going on on that map, that this is an appropriate development for the site?
Well, yes, yeah, clearly. I mean, it's a mixed use to value use uh in a in a mixed use zone. It's approximate to the R three zone, which is multifamily. This is also multifamily. Uh, there's a there's a pedestrian bridge that crosses between the two districts. It's proximate to Journal Square. Uh, and as as some of the photographs that that the architect had shown before, there are other multifamily and newer multifamily developments really nearby this. So it really, it kind of really fits in with the ongoing redevelopment of this area.
Thank you. I, Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Um, yeah, I have no questions for Ed as usual. He's uh. Been pretty descriptive. Um, anybody, any questions? Anything? Okay, thank you, counsel. Anything else from you?
Yeah, I would just uh just ask in 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 closing that you please appreciate everything that we've presented tonight. And and I would ask respectfully that you approve this application for preliminary and final major site plan along with the variances that have been enumerated and presented.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right, so at this time, we'll open it up for public. Uh, if anybody out there wants to comment, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public?
Mr. Chair, seeing the public, I move to close the public portion.
Back then.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Erica, do you have anything to add?
Uh, so I provided a staff report dated November twenty third uh to counsel. Uh, I just want you to know if you've reviewed it and if you agree to the standard conditions outlined in that report.
Yes, I have, and thank you very much. We we absolutely accept those.
Okay, thank you. I have no further comments and staff are going to approval.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two zero dash one zero seven as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded for approval.
Uh, Vice Chairman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen, I mean Horton.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye, great addition to the community.
Excellent. And Chairman Langston.
Yeah, it's uh again, nice design from Ms. Bajaj. Um, and Mr. Colling as as always, uh. You know, nailed his points home. Uh, I think the variances are well within reason, so I'm an aye.
All right, uh, motion carries all in favor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Uh, all right, if we could real quick, let's bring up uh Stephen Joseph. We are going to be carrying uh case P one nine dash one seven one for sixteen to twenty Nevin Street.
I don't see him. Maybe he left?
I don't know.
Is Cameron still on?
Yeah, I'm I'm here. Um, he confirmed via email to agree to carry.
Okay.
With preservation of notice.
Okay, so uh we're going to carry to December eighth for case P one nine dash one seven one for sixteen to twenty Nevin Street. Uh, we have Ashley Bryn with her hand up. Uh, I don't. Think she has anything else tonight?
No, because it was just Stephen Joseph's. Maybe that's a leftover?
No, it just went up. Do we want to uh bring Bryn up real quick?
Yeah, we should see what what she would like.
Hi, yeah.
Hi.
Intentional hand raising.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have some issues we would like to bring on the record for case P twenty dash zero two five.
Okay, um, should we wait until we speak to Jean?
Yeah. Yeah. Call the case first. We can leave Ms. Breen on the screen and let's, are we going to call the case, Chairman? What are we doing?
We are, I'm going to bring Jean up. I'll call the case and we'll bring Jean up and uh we'll have a conversation real quick. Yeah. Let's call case P two zero dash zero two five uh is a preliminary final major site plan with C variances for twenty carbon place. Jean, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I don't know if you heard, we're losing uh.
I did.
Mr. Chair Gonzalez very soon.
Uh, I have a suggestion. I have a suggestion if you would hear me out. Uh, I know you're short for time.
We are. We have to get resolutions memorialized as well tonight.
Yeah, and I know that uh one of the things, oh, thi- this is actually two applications. One is a subdivision tied to a site plan application. What I was going to suggest to you is since the subdivision application is really short, it's one person. With a very clear division of property, uh that you hear the subdivision and vote on it. And we'll take the site plan application next time around with another vote.
But we have one case number.
I don't know why that's the case, but the the notice was for subdivision and a site plan approval.
Um.
And there was two applications filed.
Yeah, I.
I have it all lumped under one case number. So, Jean, okay, I guess just the way it was filed, but I do have two general development applications, but it's lumped under.
Yeah, I I have no idea how the enumeration occurred, but there's a subdivision application and there's a site plan application.
Well, if if that's the case, they were sunshine then properly also.
They were sunshine. Uh, well, I I the notice went out, the public notice went out properly. The publication was properly done because it mentioned both.
Uh, I'm I'm saying that planning sunshine.
Ah.
Is improper on our on our agenda. Um, Erica, which case number are we open to now? The uh the P two zero dash zero two five, is that the site plan or is that the subdivision?
Everything I have that was filed.
That was the site plan.
Was have these two together. I don't even, I'm not sure if they're even separate on our intake law. I believe the way that our office filed it was as one. I did file it. Um, I didn't do the intake, but I believe that's the way it was given to me.
Okay, Gina, I. I feel like I'm going to disappoint you here tonight, but um I think we're going to have to get that worked out as well. If.
Here's my problem. Here's my problem. My problem is that I have a client that for various reasons needs to start this, at least start it today. Uh, doesn't have to finish it today and can just do the engineering today if you want to do the engineering portion of the site plan. And then do the subdivision later later, that's fine.
I mean, technically, we already called the application. It is open on record right now.
Right.
So if that's what you're looking for. I think we've satisfied that at least. We can.
You mean by calling it?
Yeah, we can confirm your notice. And um apparently, uh, we do have an objector. Uh, so you know, we are going to have to work out, work out an objection. Um.
So counsel or chairman, for the record, let's let's address the noticed issue as best we can. Uh, Mr. Polino, I see the notice. The notice indicates that there is a subdivision, but I only have a noted, one notice for both the subdivision. And the site plan. There were not two separate notices, correct?
No, there was one notice.
Right, okay. I have no issue with that. Uh, I find that, you know, that's proper. I don't have an issue with that. I think it clearly identifies what the application is. So with respect to the notice, I find it to be in order, Chairman. And I think that as a result, the jurisdiction is proper before the board. With respect to the issue of sunshining. Chairman, I have everything in. In the portal as far as the subdivision, the site plan, the topo plans, affidavits of ownership. So I'm not clear. I guess, yes, the subdivision application was filed, as was a site plan application. But it's common practice to file a subdivision and site plan. As one application simultaneously, there's nothing that requires the subdivision to be filed separately from the site plan. Occasionally, we bifurcate applications and and really. The purpose of that is to address some of the easier items and to potentially save on on the cost of the. Plan preparation itself, so uh that's that's where I'm at on this, Chairman and and counsel. So I I think as far as procedurally goes, we're able to proceed. And I have no issue.
Okay.
Council Breen, I think we should have her place her appearance on the record, who she represents. It sounded like she was objecting in part to the application, but. I think we should hear from her at least and and see if we can identify some issues, so. Chairman, I'll I'll defer to you.
Sure, no, that's that's exactly what I want to do.
Ms. Breen, are you there?
You're muted.
There you are, you're.
She's muted. Ms. Breen, you're muted.
I'm sorry, my internet keeps kicking me out, so I'm going between my two devices. Um. Did you want me to to put our our concerns on the record?
Yeah, I'd like you to identify who you represent, counsel, and then, yes, and. Counsel, your your internet does seem to be cutting in and out, but we'll try to work through it.
I might be able to help. I did receive a phone call.
To be good, but let's see, Jean.
I'm sorry. So we represent the adjoining property owner forty nine Fisk LLC. We put the neighbor on notice about a building that was encroaching on our property. And we know it's not an issue for this board, but we wanted to make sure it was on the record, so we preserved our rights with respect to the encroachment. We did not receive the notice and did not have the opportunity to review the survey, which appears to be in conflict in a material way with our survey. So we think it's appropriate for the board to carry the application so we have a chance to review the plans.
If I could respond to that, if I can, counsel?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Uh, I did receive a call from Don Pepe from the same office as Ashley. During the course of this hearing, while other matters were being heard, he told me of the two issues, which one was the encroachment. And and the other is it was the a lack of notice. The notice, the notice is the notice. I mean, we were given a notice listing from the city. Uh, there was publication, there was a mailing, and uh I assume that he was part of it. We hear this often from people that say that you see something, I don't know whether he did or not. The second issue as to the encroachment, that's really not your issue, but even were you to consider it. The building that encroaches upon the property is being demolished as part of this application. So that issue is moot. It goes away once the building is gone. And we could settle the the line issues, the lot line issues uh separately from the planning board's issues uh of of zoning. Uh, so I don't think either of those those objections would inhibit your hearing testimony on the site plan or the subdivision. That's what I, that's my argument.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Breen, do you have any? Concern with that testimony?
Um, our position remains the same.
Okay.
So, Ms. Breen, what is the property address for you?
It's forty nine Fisk Street.
And your client is forty nine Frisk Property Owners LLC?
Correct.
Okay, so uh I do have them on the list. I have a certified mail receipt that it went out to them, so uh. That answers that. I will note for purposes of the record that your client apparently is registered with the city at an address in New York. And perhaps that has caused uh the delay in them receiving it. I don't know, but either way, obviously, as we all know, the requirement is that the notice goes out in conformance with the list. And uh that's what's happened here this evening. Obviously, you guys are aware of the proceeding, so. Uh, we can move forward in that regard and we'll preserve your. Your position for the record. And counsel, uh, Breen, your position is that? The applicant's building encroaches onto your property?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, and Mr. Polino, it's your uh position that that building is being demolished as part of this application, even if it does encroach?
Exactly.
So Chairman, I I think from a procedural and jurisdictional point of view, we can proceed. Counsel's objections are noted for the record and preserved for for their purposes. And I am sure that that issue will will get addressed as the process plays itself out. So with that, Chairman, I do note the time is now quarter to ten.
Yeah.
And we do have to memorialize those resolutions, so.
We do. Uh, so counsel.
I I I appreciate the Chairman uh calling the the matter. Uh, I I think we, because of your time constraints, I I think you've gone about as far as you can go here. I I don't want, I know what your issues are and I know what you need to do before the end of, you're losing your quorum. So I I I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna raise a horrible over here.
Okay, thank, thank you. Um, I I hope, you know, us at least calling this helps your client out. Um, so uh, could I get a motion to carry case P two zero dash zero two five twenty carbon place? Uh, to a date certain December eighth with preservation of notice uh with testimony taken.
Sure, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to uh carry a case P two zero dash zero two five uh twenty carbon place to a date certain of twelve eight. Uh, twenty twenty uh with preservation of notice. And testimony taken.
I can.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Erica, could we have a roll call, please, for Jean?
Yes, Vice Chairman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Your motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board.
Okay, let's move on. Okay, let's move on to memorization of resolutions, please.
Sure, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to memorialize the following resolutions. There are six and then one actual correction. So I'll start with one applicant, two four one Third Street Realty LLC for minor site plan approval, address at two forty-one Third Street, block one 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 zero nine, lot five. Case number on that is P two zero dash zero eight eight. Second resolution is applicant Sims Development LLC for minor subdivision with C variances. Address is one two two Terrace Avenue, block two five zero three, lot five. Case number P two zero dash zero three zero. Third resolution is recommending approval and adoption to City Council the proposed amendments to the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance, chapter three forty-five, article three, traffic and visual impact assessment. Fourth resolution is applicant Randy Levitt, capital N A, for minor site plan approval, address two, sorry, nine two one Bergen Avenue, block one two one zero four, lot two. Case number P two zero dash zero seven five. Number five is applicant five seven five Provonia LLC for preliminary and final major site plan amendment approval, the design waiver and a C deviation, address at five thirty-two Summit Avenue, block nine six zero six, lot two nine zero one, formerly twenty-nine thirty-two dash thirty-five. Case number P two zero dash one one three on that one. And the last resolution is applicant Harts Mountain Industries Incorporated for administrative amendment approval. Address is at two Journal Square, block nine four zero three, lot fifteen. In parentheses, C zero 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 two and close parentheses, and case number on that is P two zero dash zero six three. I do have a resolution for correction to be made on the record. Following resolution is for case P one nine dash one nine zero for minor subdivision and site plan at two fifty-two Webster Avenue. The case was heard at the September eighth, twenty twenty virtual planning board meeting under the incorrect case number of P one nine dash zero nine zero. The resolution will be memorialized under the correct case number, which was assigned to this property at the point of original filing with the Division of City Planning in two thousand nineteen. This is resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, applicant two fifty-two Webster Avenue LLC for minor subdivision and site plan. Address is two fifty-two Webster Avenue, block two three zero six, lot fourteen. Case number P one nine dash one nine zero.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please, Erica?
Yes, Vice Chairman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Chairman, I mean, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Horton. Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Jeffrey, you almost got it.
All right, executive session.
No, but Chairman, if I may, can we just, we have a meeting on the eighth?
Yes.
And what is the date of the second meeting in December? Is it that twenty-second?
No, so we do not have an additional meeting scheduled for December.
Okay.
We could do a special meeting if necessary.
I don't think that's necessary.
What'd you say?
I don't think that's necessary.
We have had a number of special meetings.
I feel like we do this every week now.
We do. Yeah, that's what it's
That's why as chairman.
We we can discuss this at a later date.
Yeah. We'll see how it goes on the
Could I have a motion for adjournment then?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
And motion made and seconded. Thank you, guys. We're adjourned or landed.
Thanks, guys. I'm sorry about having to pop out at ten. I was hoping that after the after, thank you. All right, after Erica, you sent that, you know, addendum on the corrected agenda. I figured we'd be able to get out, but we get it. So I really apologize, but I'm hoping you guys are okay with it.
Don't worry.
Apologize.
No worries. Thank you, Eddie.
Thanksgiving, guys.
You stay safe everywhere.
You too.